Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council meeting of April the ninth. Can we please have a roll?
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here. Jennifer, could you please lead us in the pledge this evening?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Jennifer. Now we'll move under to public comment. Are there any speaker cards? And just if there is items not on the agenda that you wish to speak on this evening, this would be the opportunity to do so. Also, if there's items that are on the agenda, obviously we have one that a lot of folks are here for under conduct of business, please fill out a speaker card and hand that to the deputy city clerk, Vicki, for public comment. Vicki.
Public comment. Individuals are allowed three minutes, groups in attendance five minutes. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to law. The first person I have is about parking tickets, Greg Hutto. Hutto?
You can go right to the podium Greg, please.
Hello everybody, members of the council. My name's Greg. And it's the issue of a parking ticket that I live on a court, Palomar Court, right at the street here. And the other night, the other morning, we came out and we all had $50 tickets on our window. My issue is that I've been parking there for some 40 years, the same place, and they want us to park sideways. I can understand that, but we parked this way because if we parked sideways, there's no room for our cars. We'd be blocking our own driveways. So my issue is that we didn't get notices for the tickets. Some people are saying they did get them, but we didn't get any notices for the tickets. And I have a few neighbors that are going to talk to. They didn't get notices either. They said they were on social media, but I really don't hang out on social media. So I just got the $50 ticket and that was it. And the issue is the parking on Palomar Court. For all these years, it's never been a problem, so I'm addressing that issue today. And that's about what I have to say about that. So I understand we only get three minutes apiece to talk, so that's what we're addressing today.
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Wait for the clerk to call.
Okay, the next name I have is Greg, excuse me, Jeff Lampshire.
Perfect.
Perfect timing.
So I'm speaking on the same issue. I took a measurement of the court and questioned if that's an issue or relative relevant. I measured 75 feet across the court and the perpendicular as opposed to parallel parking didn't seem, or has never seemed to be, an issue in terms of the turning of vehicles, whether emergency or service vehicles. So and then again, the what was in my estimation, an inept approach to the parking notification, what the warning, one, the warning did not show anything to do with a cul-de-sac, two, we did not receive them, and certainly not in a mailbox. I was told by community service officers that they were posted on the cars, but that is a very fragile way to post warnings that there's going to be a $50 citation on the way. So we did not get it in the mailbox. Ticketing officers then came at 6:30 or 6:40 in the morning. We did not have any chance to greet them or understand the issue that was going on. So there seems to have been a lack of communication. Greg spoke of there was certain online notifications or public service announcements on the public television, the cable television service, and it depended on people seeing that. And that was not like getting a notification, a warning, in the mailbox that actually specified the relevant issue in our case, which was parking on a cul-de-sac. We did see warnings for people parking on parallel, on streets with adjacent sidewalks, where sidewalks were going, people were going to be happening, parking legally with the right side of their car, parallel to the curb, but nothing to do with a cul-de-sac. So there's the issues that I had to speak with.
Thank you very much.
The next person is Wylen Lai.
I hope I didn't say it badly.
You nailed it.
Okay. Hi, my name is Wylen. I represent Dover Court on the same issue. We also live on a cul-de-sac. Again, my ticket was at 5:33 AM, so I had no chance, even though I leave at 6:00 AM in the morning. So right now, I guess, I think my biggest issue is the lack of warning. I noticed that other neighbors in my court actually got a warning, but they were warned on parking, you know, on the wrong way of the street, you know, with the head facing the wrong way. And when they got a warning and I didn't, and my car was there, I figured, I think we should be fine. So I think even the warning approach was done inappropriately. But anyway, so I understand the law. I look up the code. I understand that the whole 15 inches and two right side wheels, all that stuff, but at the same time though, in a cul-de-sac, that does limits, that cuts off a lot of space. Now, instead of having four spaces, we have like two. So I just want the council members to understand the concern. And I also understand officers are just doing their job. So I still love SB, San Bruno Police. You guys are great. And by the same time though, I just at least wanted, if I could get a warning instead of a ticket, that would be much appreciated.
Thank you.
The next person is Elman Wu.
Hello, I'm here to talk about the same issue. I live next door to Wylen and I got a ticket also. And like he said, a neighbor of ours parked the wrong way and she got a notice. And it was a notice to saying that she parked the wrong way, but it was obvious the parking enforcement officer knew that we were all parked illegally also. And they should have put flyers on our cars and gave us notice. We would love to comply with the law instead of fighting a $50 ticket. We understand the law is there, but it seemed to me that it was done underhandedly. A lot of people were nicer, but I think it was underhanded because it was obvious we were parked the wrong way. The parking enforcement officer came by, gave that person a notice, but no one else a notice. And coming at 5:30 in the morning, it was obvious that, to me at least, obvious to me that the parking officers knew about our court, knew about those other courts, knew about everywhere that had these problems, or you guys call problems. And they came at 5:30 in the morning and then gave everybody tickets. So they, it was, to me, I think it seemed targeted. They knew these places, they knew the courts, they knew the car, which spots had the cars that were parked the wrong ways. And for, I don't know how many officers they have, you guys have for parking enforcement, but to be able to give everyone a ticket within 5:30 to 7 o'clock, seemed like it was, you guys knew, I mean, they knew where the problem spots were, or what you guys call problem spots, and they knew where to go. So they could have easily given us warnings. And if it's the law, we would be happy to comply. And obviously, it is the law, but we would be happy to comply than come down here and fight you guys for, you know, for a refund or for a pardon of the ticket. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bunny Epperson, and I've lived in San Bruno since 1954. I'm currently a member of the senior advisory board of the San Bruno Senior Center. I am here to address the ticket I received this morning parking in front of my own home on a cul-de-sac. I was not given any kind of written notice or anything was put on our cars, any kind of a notification. I didn't, I do feel that the city should have had some sort of a courtesy to put a warning on my vehicle. Not every household is on social media or subscribes to San Bruno Cable TV. I request an exception or a variance to the current parking code to allow perpendicular parking in front of our own homes on a court. Thank you.
Thank you Bunny.
The next person is Nathan Chan, but I'm not sure that they want to speak about the parking tickets.
You are correct. I'm not here to talk about the parking ticket. So I understand that it's always a challenge to find spaces for public meetings like this. But I will say that getting here for me was, I think, a little bit more dangerous than I bargained for. I did not drive here. I walked here from El Camino. And the last stretch of Crystal Springs was quite dicey. I mean, there's no sidewalk there, the shoulder is very narrow. Lucky it was during the day, so the cars could see me. But I don't really want to walk back that way at night. I think it's important for public meetings like this to be held at times and places so that all members of the public can participate. You know, not all of us are traveling by car. And so it would be nice to be somewhere that was, meet somewhere that was walkable and that we could feel safe walking to or biking to. Thank you.
Thank you. And just staff can let you know, there is, sir, there is a path that does not go on Crystal Springs and it goes right to the park and it's led.
I can show that, sir.
Okay?
I watch it.
Yeah, thank you. Just so I want you to get home safe.
Next is Kevin Martinez.
Hi, I'm Kevin Martinez, 177 Martin Place. I also, I take care of my mom at Palomar Court, and that's where, I'm sure you've heard the issue already with the tow-in parking. We've been living there since 1969. We've been doing that ever since I can remember. I moved there when I was five years old. First time I pulled into the property, we pulled in tow first. That is the efficient way to park on that street. In order to change that, would be useless. No benefit to it at all. It would just ruin the parking on the whole street. And I think there should be an exception. When we have parties, it's the most efficient way to park. Nobody's complaining about it that I know of. Nobody's ever complained about it in 50 years. All of a sudden, it's changed. So I would like it to be an exception for the cul-de-sac.
Thank you very much.
Next is Sandra Perez-Vargas.
Hello. I'm really interested tonight in this instant ticketing that everybody received. Like they said, it's the law, but a lot of people didn't know. It's interesting to me because on, in my neighborhood, on my block, I've been begging people for double parking, parking on sidewalks. And it just seems like we call and call again, and we get no response. Or we call and say, you know, one person is parked this way, and so are 10 others. They're like, well, would you go get the address to every single one? And we don't get that type of response, even though the notices have gone out. So I think that the city really needs to look at having a plan where laws are enforced evenly and fairly, and they listen to the areas. If they're not complaining, then maybe that should be the last place you go. And where you're having a bubbling of complaints and concerns, maybe that should be your first focus, instead of surprising people at 5:30 in the morning. And I mean, that's all I have to say. Just go back to the plan, let everybody know. Not everybody's on social media. And in my neighborhood, I am more than happy to see the law enforced, because everybody knows what they're doing isn't cool. But in their case, it just didn't seem like anybody was informed at all, and they woke up to those tickets. You know, we all, it's against the law. I get that, so I'm not going to, you know, defend or debate that. But I think we should target where we're focusing. Cars blocking sidewalks, major issue. I've stood here for the last three years. I've written, I think, every one of you at some point, Marty, thank you for always coming around and measuring the spots, what can fit here. But every day, there's a risk of somebody walking into the street because they have to go around a vehicle that's illegally parked. You all know my friend Steve Rama. He and many other people are in wheelchairs. They're having to maneuver around cars that block the complete sidewalk because there's no parking, or for whatever reason. So that's a huge liability. Why would the city risk not focusing on where somebody could get hit, somebody can get killed, versus everybody's asleep? Priorities. Thank you.
Thank you Sandra. Next.
Next is David Mitchell.
No surprise, I'm here to talk about the parking as well. And I was going to mention that yes, I agree with everybody that it was sad, the way that it was handled, almost as if it was, we were ambushed, because of course, nobody at the top of a court received any notices. And even if they had received one, the notice shows a picture of something totally different. It doesn't talk about parking perpendicular, doesn't talk about any of that type of thing. But we have six houses on the court I live on, and there's eight spaces that have just been removed. And I think to relate to the lady who spoke before me here, it actually creates more safety issues. So we're being told to park in your driveway, but you're actually now backing up across the sidewalk. You're being told to park in your driveway. And if you know San Bruno was built when the codes were a little different, and you know, even our ex-mayor, his bumper is across the sidewalk. And he parks that way for the last, you know, how many years? So there's other issues as well. We have a few people who like to do a little exhibition of speed every once in a while. With the bigger, wider court, we have a pretty big court. So they're able to do that, even with the cars parked perpendicular. But now, it's going to make it even more inviting for them to do that. So the concern is that, you know, yes, it was done in a way that wasn't the right way to do it. It was, there was notification, everybody's got a mailbox. We get notifications about our back gutter. We get notifications about Crystal Springs. It's the way to notify everybody. Not everybody has a computer, not everybody's on social media, everybody has a mailbox. So that wasn't done right. And yes, the notices weren't given to us. But the $50 ticket isn't the issue, it's that six to eight parking spaces were taken away. That's going to cause a bunch of other issues. It's also going to cause neighbor conflict. We all know that neighbor conflict, half of that is caused by parking. Somebody's parked in my spot, it's moved. Now, all these parking spaces that are missing, they're also going to cause that as well. They're going to have some other issues with cars moving down the street, pushing people out onto other streets, pushing some of the elderly people who are now going to be parking down the street. They're not going to walk all the way down to the end of the block to cross in the crosswalk. They're going to cross in the middle of the street, so they can't park in front of their house. We literally can't park in front of our houses anymore because of this. So we're hoping that San Bruno is a little bit smarter, and not just taking a California vehicle code that hasn't been upheld for who knows how many years. I've only been in San Bruno 18 years doing this, but I know many of you have been here a lot longer. So, you know, other cities that have a lot more bureaucracy and can't seem to figure out what's going on, they've done some smarter things. In San Francisco, they actually make you park perpendicular, because they are spaces where you need more parking, and it makes sense to this. So they take into account what's going on in this street, not just a blanket enforcement that I feel like that most of the people on the top of the court got caught in this web. I don't know that it was really the intent ever to ticket the people at the top of the court. I think this enforcement shows clearly what they were trying to enforce. It wasn't that. I think somebody made a poor judgment at the last minute to go ahead and ticket all the people at the top of the court, because it fits into the actual vehicle code. When I spoke to the young officers, who are the volunteer officers, that morning, they said, yeah, we don't agree with this either. We didn't think this was right. We asked, and they said, yes, you need to do this. And I think they said that because it doesn't make sense. We have fire trucks, we have UPS trucks.
Could you, I'm sorry, you exceeded. Could you start to wind up your comments if you could, please?
Well, so anyways, I would like to say thank you, and I would just like to find out what the next step is. I think, I think there's a traffic safety committee, and I think some people are getting sworn in here. So hopefully, we'll figure this out and do something sensible.
Thank you.
Kevin Martinez would like to speak again on a separate issue.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I'm not trying not to waste anybody's time. There was an issue, there's an issue that's been bothering me for a long time now. And that's the San Mateo Avenue. And in the last few years, especially since the indoor pool, I, every time I go pull off El Camino on the San Mateo Avenue, I'm guaranteed, I say nine times out of 10, anybody could feel like this, somebody's using the double flashers. Got to go around, across the double yellow line, into oncoming traffic. Now, I've had a police officer, I don't know who it was, right in front of me, crossed into the other side, against the grain, three cars later, cuts back and just kept taking off. Didn't issue a ticket or anything. If it was Mission Street, and it had two lanes going in each way, and we can get around the double parkers going in the right direction, that would be fairly safe. But the fact we have to cross a double yellow line, and literally, people, I was down by the music store, I had to go to the music store. I went and parked in the parking lot in back, because there was a guy parked, I went around him, right in front of the music store. He's in the music store just browsing around. He has his BMW parked right in the middle of the street. Everybody's going around him, building up in the other direction, because these guys can't go, it's against the grain. And I see this every day, nine times out of 10, I drive down there, watch, there's going to be somebody with their park anywhere lights. And sure enough, I got a crossover against the grain, going the wrong way. None of these cars are getting tickets for going the wrong way, but nobody's getting tickets for parking anywhere they want. I went around, I found a spot. I always do. I never do that. But apparently, people think it's okay. I think we should start enforcing that, so we can get a good example to stop that behavior. So we can proceed safely down our main street there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have no more speaker cards.
Is there anybody else that wanted to speak on an item that is not on the agenda that's here this evening? Seeing none, go ahead. So we live in a, I'll say, we'll say it's kind of getting to a medium-sized city, but it's kind of, it's still a small town in my world. And so I started receiving some calls and on Saturday. So I've had an opportunity to talk to the city manager, so I asked the city manager if he could, because knowing this topic would probably come up and some concerns. And enough of you have come here, so I'd like some feedback. We got the feedback, so I'd like to turn it over to staff, since you're here. City manager.
Sure. Good afternoon, Mayor. My name is Javon Grogan, city manager. And I will, at your request, respond to some of the public comment.
Yes, please.
As we know, parking is a significant issue in San Bruno, not just on the east side of town, but throughout. One of the challenges that we face is not just wrong-way parking, but also sidewalk parking. Shortly after my arrival as a city manager nine months ago, it was brought to my attention that the city did a proactive enforcement of sidewalk parking approximately a year ago, but that was stopped due to some pressure because of the number of tickets that were being received. The challenge is that the problem didn't go away. We still face a significant issue with sidewalk parking and wrong-way parking. And so, as you guys all know, there was a 3,000 signature petition that was delivered to the city council, essentially begging the community to do something about the parking challenges. And we had a parking town hall. And there's a whole list of strategies that staff is working on, vis-à-vis parking, whether it's changing some of our zoning and building codes to allow people to provide more off-street parking, whether it's working on the implementation of a residential parking program. But another prong that was asked for was additional enforcement. And so we put together a plan to step up enforcement of parking issues, sidewalk parking and wrong-way parking in particular. There was a public education campaign on wrong-way parking that the community was absolutely right. It was really geared towards wrong-way parking on parallel streets, not really cul-de-sacs and the perpendicular angled parking. That public education was delivered on social media. It was delivered via press release. There was an article in the San Mateo Daily Journal, and there were various posts on various social media platforms about that. And so a month of warning notices went out, and the city issued approximately 2,700 warning notices in neighborhoods all throughout the city. One of the things that was said when the community asked for enforcement, they said, don't do what we feel like has been done before, and just concentrate your enforcement on one side of town. Don't just enforce on the east side of town. And we committed to not do that. We committed to actually having an enforcement posture that was citywide. And so there was a month of warning notices, and after that month of warning notices, citations were issued. I will submit that it was never the intention for citations to be issued on the courts without going through a very detailed and process to decide. Although it has been going on for 60 years, as some have said, and although it is illegal, can it be legalized? And what I will submit to council, and I mentioned to the council members, is I'm willing to take that, and we'll take that to the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee. And it may not be possible to legalize it on every court, but there are likely a number of courts where it can be legalized, and there's the appropriate turning radius to have the perpendicular and parallel parking. What I would submit to anyone that received a parking citation in a cul-de-sac is that there is a process for an appeal. It does not cost to do an appeal. If you go online through, on the city of San Bruno's website, www.sanbruno.ca.gov, under the police department, it details the parking citation process. And you can submit it online within 21 days, or you can do it in writing within 21 days. And this is specific, and what I'm saying is that people that received a citation on a court, I would suggest that you go through that, through that process. It is unfortunate that our information campaign did not talk about courts, and that did not happen, nor was it the intention when we were enforcing on wrong-way parking. Kind of elevating that California vehicle code that says parking the wrong way is illegal, was our intention to elevate it for the courts without a very detailed process. So we'll start that process. And I encourage the members of the community that spoke tonight, or those that received a citation in a cul-de-sac over the, I think it's really been over the last three days that this issue has occurred, to go through that process. Thank you.
Hold on, hold on, sir, 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 please. So we got to speak because we're on TV. But so what the city manager just reported to us was, A, if you've received a citation, to go through the appeal process. If you're not sure you didn't write it down, you can call the city clerk's office, we can get you the information. Two is whether or not to have some of this question go to the TSPC, and have them take a look at it and see where it could be legalized if it meets the parameters of what's been discussed. Is the council fine with that being sent to the TSPC? Counsel?
Yes.
Yes?
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead Mike. In regards to the cul-de-sac, go ahead, city manager.
Yeah, you know, I will also add that I've instructed the police department to, in their enforcement of wrong-way vehicles, to deprioritize enforcement on cul-de-sacs until we can go through the process through the TSPC and find out on what cul-de-sacs it is possible to legalize it, and on what cul-de-sacs it needs to remain illegal.
Can we repeat that one more time?
Yeah.
Absolutely. I was asked for those at home to repeat the question, or to repeat my statement. And what I said is that I've instructed the police department to deprioritize the wrong-vehicle enforcement on cul-de-sacs until we can go through the formal process through the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee to determine, per cul-de-sac, what cul-de-sac meets the appropriate turnarounds to legalize angled or perpendicular parking, and on what cul-de-sacs it needs to remain against the law for perpendicular or angled parking.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
I just have concerns with this having to go back to Traffic and Safety Committee. They've got a number of issues that aren't getting addressed as it is. I don't know if we can streamline this process and have staff review this with the chief, and determine if there's a recommendation they can come back to council at next month's meeting that we can have a better discussion. Because I don't know that we, like the comments you've heard tonight, addressing the cul-de-sac problem is, was the right approach, so.
Sure. So I think what I would say to that council member is that it really needs to be done. If we're looking to formally take an action to legalize angled or perpendicular parking on cul-de-sacs, that requires a process where our traffic engineers need to look at it on the cul-de-sac, because when streets are designed, they're designed with statutory radiuses. And so if we are taking a formal action to legalize something, even though it's been done formally for quite some time, we really want to go through the formal process to make sure that that's been vetted. And so I do think we can't do that by next meeting. But I understand your point, which is if it goes to the TSPC, it needs to be prioritized and not be put at the bottom of their already long list of priorities. Understand that. Understand that.
Okay. So again, I want to thank those that came out to bring this forward. And again, like I said, I did start to hear this from some on Saturday morning. And so, to repeat, again, appeal if you've received the citation. TSPC will get this item as a priority to look at it, and it is now not a priority to have those cul-de-sacs being ticketed. And so, will be held back until the review can be done. So hopefully that, I just wanted to reiterate that, since you folks took your time to be here, so I wanted you to hear that. And with that, then we're going to go ahead and move on since there's no more public comment. So thank you all for being here that came to speak on those items, on that item. Under announcements and presentations, since we've been talking about TSPC, we have two members to be sworn in for TSPC and one for Citizens Crime Prevention Committee. Vicki?
So we have Linda Boscano was appointed to Citizens Crime Prevention. Is Linda here? You want to come and stand over here? And then Stephen Seymour and John Lampros were both appointed to the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee. Is John?
Okay. Vicki, hold on. Let me just, let's folks get seated so they get the time and respect. We already did the pledge.
No, we're going to be giving you your oath now.
Okay. Deputy City Clerk Vicki Hashay will go ahead and administer the oath to those three.
Sat down. Okay. So, if you would just raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me, and the first part is going to be repeating your name. So, I do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will wellen faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as members of the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee and Citizens Crime Prevention. Congratulations, and thank you very much. Thank you. And we have, good appointment for you.
We want to congratulate the three, and of course, they're volunteering their time. This is them caring about the community with others who stepped forward, who applied as well for other positions. And we encourage those who may have never or are not selected or but want to participate but may not want to join and have to go to every meeting. You're always welcome to attend all of these meetings. They're open to the public, your input is valuable and welcomed. And TSPC, you'll be hearing some topics coming up soon. Next, we have two proclamations. The first one is the proclamation recognizing April 14th through the 20th as National Public Safety. Tell Communicator Week, and this is Shannon. So, there is a lot, and I will tell you, I can read all these wherethes and now therfor's, but I will tell you that, I think, to get to the crux of it, it's recognizing and honoring those that really are those folks that we hear from. So when you're in need and you're calling 911, not knowing what else to do or where else to turn for you or your family, these are the folks that are on the front lines. These are the folks that you will hear from. These are the ones that were through the PG&E gas line explosion in 210 who took the calls, the active shooter back in April 3rd of last year, who took the hundreds of calls from folks who were just trying to, concerned, scared, and fleeing for their safety. So, again, I don't think it does it just with just this. It's important for this council, and we are, as a collective, recognizing all of they do. There are those, which is interesting because they don't like the center of attention, they don't like to give speeches, and if you've gone down there and watched them work, it is impressive how they jumble, how they maintain, how they're calm, and how their professionalism is, to me, something I have always been, since I've worked for this city, very proud and very, to see their dedication. It is something that we are fortunate in this community to have a talented staff, a good department, that performs their job 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, can I have the representative, and on behalf of the city council, to proclaim this and honor and respect all that you do? Like I said, no, they don't want to speak, but they are appreciative. The next one, we have a proclamation recognizing April 14th through the 20th as Mosquito Awareness Week. And this, Robert, you're going to accept? This is, Robert is our representative for the city of San Bruno, another one of these folks in the community that volunteers his time to represent us, which is located on Rollins Road. And it is also to, one of the continued things are about dumping all standing water. As we know, we've had a little bit of rain this year, and we don't realize how the standing water does create those environments in which the mosquito abatement group has to go out and take care of that. But it's also inviting everyone to attend the district's open house, which is April 18th from 4:00 to 7:00, which is located at 1351 Rollins Road. And a couple of us have attended that, and it's very, very interesting. So I would say if you have the time and opportunity, easy parking, right off Rollins, and I think it's well worth your time. So, on behalf of myself and the council declaring this, I will give this to Robert, who is our representative for the city of San Bruno.
Thank you very much, Mayor and the city council. I want to make just two comments. You touched on the open house. There are flyers on the back table, so you can take them on the way out. I want to, for the district, thank the city, the city staff, the park staff, and the residents who, over the years, when there's, they find a dead bird, they either call 877-WNV-BIRD or they call the district directly at 344-8592. The district will see that the birds get picked up and tested, and we need more eyes out there. That's all I really want to say. I'll thank you for your continued support of the district, and if you have questions, I'm around or you can get ahold of me, or 344-8592 will get you an answer. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your contribution. And so now, we're going to move to receive the annual report from the personnel board. And it's going to take some credit to say, the crowd is here for this report, so you have an audience.
Wonderful. We appreciate the crowd for the presentation to the city council of the city of San Bruno Personnel Board. Good evening, my name is Ed Fuentes, I'm the chairperson of the Personnel Board. I'd like to begin by first thanking the city council for their continued leadership and dedication to make our rather small town, our big town of San Bruno, prosper today and tomorrow. Really appreciate all your dedication. The Personnel Board is made up of three members. I, Ed Fuentes, am the chair. My colleagues are Joe Roberts, vice chair, and Ed Comaford, fellow board member. Our city council liaison is Michael Salazar, thank you very much for your support. And we are directed and by the expert advice of our staff liaison, Tammy Yuki and Monica Walker. I think they're trying to load the presentation, so pause. Technical difficulties. I can start over, it's more slower. Should probably go move my car from parking. You know what we can do while we're doing that? I'm going to ask our vice mayor to talk about Operation Clean Sweep.
I can do that, but first I want to make a comment about the Personnel Board, and I want to thank them for continuing their service. There was a time, not in the too distant past, that there was talk about discontinuing the Personnel Board, and we restructured it, and we want to emphasize to everyone here what a fantastic tedious job they have. And it's no fun particularly. They have to read volumes of material, they have to pay attention to every single word because every single word means something in the contracts that they look at and the job descriptions, and they do a fabulous job. They're one of the unsung heroes of our city, so I just want to acknowledge that and thank you all for hanging in there. I know when I was on the liaison, it was like, "Mmm," but you guys stuck it out, so we really appreciate that. So, while we're still waiting, I will skip ahead. I'm talking about Operation Clean Sweep, which I know many of you know, and that you have come before, and the people in the audience, and on the television audience. It is always the first Saturday of May, it's May 4th this year. It's 9:00 at the city park. If you come, you'll see the registration desk and you'll see the coffee and donuts at the pavilion, and we hope you, we hope you participate. We send out people all over the city, and they pick up garbage, and they find all sorts of interesting things. One year, we found an actual phone booth that was hauled out. Yes, I know people are going, "What?" No, they really, we really did, found a phone booth, and we pulled it out of the ditch that it was in. We have the Boy Scouts come, the Girl Scouts, 4-H, all sorts of different people come, and you get to know your neighbors, you get to know people that you've never met before. And then there's a barbecue that is supplied by Recology, and they haul away all the trash for free. So, we hope to see you there. You can register online at the city's website. And, oh, my time is up?
Thank you, Irene. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Once again, this is the annual presentation to the city council of the San Bruno Personnel Board. Members, once again, I'm Ed Fuentes, the chairperson. Joe Roberts is our vice chair, Ed Comaford, fellow board member. We are supported by the city council liaison, Michael Salazar. Thank you for your support. And we are gracious enough to be supported by staff members Tammy Yuki, Monica Walker, that provide us with direction and their expertise in many matters. The accomplishments for 2018-2019 included reviewed and recommended changes to the following job descriptions, Building Inspector 1 and 2, CATV Headend Technician, Planning and Housing Manager, and the Food Service Coordinator. That's reviewing and approving any changes that are needed to keep those job descriptions up to date and up with the times. In addition to these job descriptions, we extended the eligibility list for the firefighters. To do this, by extending the eligibility list, it helps in expediting hiring of critical positions, and we do not do this lightly. Other accomplishments are attending and participating in regularly scheduled quarterly meetings and any special meetings that are needed to discuss new and revised job descriptions necessary to keep the city running in a very continuous fashion. The goals for 2019 are to continue to review the status of recruitments, current eligibility lists, and compliance reports, in addition to any job description revisions and new descriptions for new jobs coming up in the future. We will continue to review the EEO4 form, which lists the workforce for city of San Bruno by sex, race, ethnicity, to ensure that we maintain our vibrant diversity in our city employment. And in addition, we are called upon to assist in proctoring written exams and evaluation tests as needed. We would like to thank the council for their, for this chance to present our accomplishments for this year.
Thank you very much. Care to say anything? Behind you. It's your gentleman behind you. Care to add anything or say anything? Okay. Anyway, Irene, I think, said it very, said it very well. It's one of those boards, too, that is critical. It's the liaison from the council and from the community that come and actually are, you're looking at everything. I mean, from the punctuation to the grammar to the regulations to the restrictions, et cetera. And it, you know, folks may say, "Well, is that really of value? Does that matter?" It always has, always does. It's critical to have you folks there, what you're doing, and we, again, appreciate because it is of your time and your passion that you have for the community, and you are, all with your backgrounds, are very skilled in this field. So I want to thank, on behalf of the council and the community, thank you for all your time and the contributions that you give to the city. Thank you, gentlemen. Javon? Javon? Now, Joanne will give us in regards to the upcoming annual Easter egg hunt and its activities.
Good evening. I would like to invite all of you to join us this Saturday, April 13th, for the annual Pancake Breakfast and Easter Egg Hunt. The All You Can Eat Pancake Breakfast will be prepared by the San Bruno Lions Club. Breakfast starts at 9:00 AM until 11:00 AM. The cost is $6 for adults, $4 for adults over 65 and youth under 12. Children ages 6 and under are free with one paid adult. From 9:30 until 10:45 AM, children can enjoy various activities such as a spring craft project, face painting, sidewalk chalk art, bubbles, and of course, visit with the Easter Bunny. Once again, this year, the Project Pride Easter Egg Hunt will be divided into age groups. 3 years and under will begin at 10:30 AM, 4 to 6-year-olds will be at 10:45 AM, 7 and 8-year-olds at 11:00 AM, and then at 11:15, all ages. All activities in the Easter Egg Hunt are free. The flyers for the event are in the back table here, and there's also information on the homepage of the city website. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, yeah, that's a lot of positive. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's not going to rain, right?
Are you making that commitment here publicly and live?
I wanted to make sure you're okay and making sure it was not going to rain.
Well, Chris Palace always, when he did it, said that he would always ensure that.
All right.
So, let's go with him watching over us, yes, with him watching over us that you will be correct, but rain or shine, it does go on. It goes on. Next item, receive project update on Phase 2 of the Recreation Aquatics Center project. update on Phase 2 of the Recreation Aquatics Center project.
Good afternoon. To the council, members of the public that are here, and our community members at home. My name is Jevon Grogan, the City Manager, and I will be one of the people that gives an update on the development of the Aquatic and Rec Center. I will be joined today by three other, three other individuals. One person will be Joanne McGreeney, the Director of our Community Services Department, that will have the job of one day running with her team this beautiful facility. And then we have two people from our architecture firm, Group 4. We have David Schnay and Don Merks. So why don't we begin? We are in the middle of what we are calling Phase 2. Phase 2 is schematic design. It's really, the best way to think of it is going from 30,000 feet to one foot really quickly. And so we had a very long community visioning process that we'll, we'll talk about that. We'll talk about that in a little bit. But essentially, this community center is in large part being developed from $50 million as a grant to the city that was provided by the San Bruno Community Foundation. And it is largely the last remaining component of this city's commitment for something good coming from the gas pipeline explosion and fire that occurred in the Crestmore neighborhood in 2010. And so we are here tonight to give you an update on where we are in our process to bring this facility to the community and what will be an amazing facility and one of the largest community projects that, that this community has had built in a long time. So our presentation, the agenda, we have really four main components. We have an overview of the roles and responsibilities. We want to give you an update on the project schedule and the work plan. We'll talk about the project, the project update on four various levels. One, regarding the budget. Two, site improvements. Three, the concept and massing diagrams. Then we'll talk in really intricate detail of the wonderful components of this building and how they will be used by the community at large. And then we'll talk about next steps. So the slide that's in front of you talks about Phase 2, Communications and Leadership. And so on tonight's agenda, under consent, is a, is a list of City Council priorities and strategic initiatives. It's a long list of things that this organization will be working on as directed by the City Council over the next year, but featured prominently is this project. And so how do you get something done when you're already busy? Our answer has been you put a lot of hands on it. And so there are a number of various components of the leadership for this Phase 2. I'll start with the center, which is our Internal Steering Committee, made up of myself, our Finance Director, our Assistant to the City Manager, our Community Services Director, our Community Services Superintendent, the Director of our Public Works, and our Director of Community and Economic Development. The other major player that we have involved in this step is our Project Manager. As the council knows, who recently approved the contract for Griffin Structures to serve as our Project Manager, we brought on Griffin Structures early in the project, which is added a little cost, but it's frankly a best practice. Griffin will be the inspector that will make sure whatever planned construction documents we develop, that the contractor delivers them. And it's a best practice to bring them on early during the, the design phase. And so the council and the Community Foundation were supportive of that request. And Griffin Structures has been with us for approximately a month now, working. The next team is our Design Team, Group 4, and two members of their, of their staff are here today. Next, we have a number of various bodies that have been informing the Phase 2 and that we will be providing updates to. The first, here is our Advisory Committee. Our Advisory Committee is made up of eight individuals. It's actually two members of the City Council, two members of the Community Foundation, two members of the Parking Recreation Commission, and two members of the Planning Commission. And so we've had three meetings of that body, and we plan to have a number of, of other ones. And we'll talk a little bit about that shortly. Also, the City Council, and this is our update to the City Council, we also provided an update to the San, San Bruno Community Foundation approximately a month ago in their, at their March meeting. We have a date to go to the Parking Rec Commission and the Planning Commission soon. We have a list of consultants. I won't run down all of these, but this is a very complex facility. And getting it done right and, and building it, and designing it is, is important. So we have everything from traffic engineers to geotechnical consultants, to landscape architect consultants, to aquatic consultants. The building calls for an indoor pool and getting the design of the nanatorium right is extremely important. Everything from lighting consultants, et cetera. And so we have been hard at work, a big team, but actually a team that's, that's working really well together. Let's talk a little bit about the project schedule and our work plan. So the graphic you have above shows our project schedule for Phase 2. So on the heels of completion of the community conceptual design, in December of 2018, we launched into Phase 2. And Phase 2 has, has a number of subcomponents. One is where we're in right now. And on this graphic, you see that dotted blue line. In all of our meetings, we move that line as we progress down the schedule. And so we're actually right on track with where we plan to be. And we're essentially in the middle of a schematic design. Next is construction documents, and that important date is August of this year. We will come back to that because that is a critical timeframe where, where we will ask the council to accept the design, and we will go on to develop construction documents. It is our plan in this to develop those construction documents, put them out to bid in 2020, and award a contract for construction in 2020, with construction taking anywhere from 20 to 22 months. And so we plan for this facility to come online in 2022. It's a long process from, from where we started. We have done a number of things to keep things moving along. One of the things that I'll also talk about is that we have on this schedule that is in detail on the next slide, that tracks our other Internal Steering Committee meetings. We've had eight of those. We've had three Advisory Committee meetings. We've had a number of technical meetings with fire, police, public works, or fire, police and fire are scheduled for May, but public works, community services. We're doing what's called a code analysis, just making sure everything is meeting the city's codes to spec. We've had a number of stakeholder meetings with St. Andrews Church. As most people in the community knows, St. Andrews Church borders our city park. We've had meetings with PG&E and PCE, looking for grant opportunities to this, one of the things in this building is for it to be an emergency shelter. And so we will need a emergency generator and a number of other components built into the building to serve that capacity. And we have met with PG&E and Peninsula Clean Energy to talk about potential grant opportunities to make our building as green as possible. And both of them have programs that can help with that. As far as public meetings, again, we met with the Community Foundation in March. We're here tonight. April 17th, we will be at the Planning Commission. July 16th, we will be at the, I'm sorry, April 17th, we'll be at the Parking Rec Commission. July 16th, we will be at the Planning Commission. And then we will be back to council per this schedule on August 13th for council, hopefully, acceptance of the design. So what else have we been doing outside of kind of really hardcore working on the design? There's a number, the sequel process, the environmental process, has already begun. And we're doing a number of site studies. So we have a parking and traffic study that is, that is underway, a biological resources review. We have a number of arborists that have been working on the project. And we have a few slides in the back that talk a little bit about the impact to the park. We've been doing a cultural resources and what's called an AB 52 Native American Heritage Notifications. That's part of the historic property as state law. We've been doing a historic resource evaluation, geotechnical analysis to take a look at the soil, et cetera. But most of our time has really been focused on what we're calling our operational analysis. And really, that's answering the question, what programmatic and physical components will be in this building? And really, to answer, what are we building? We really have to answer two questions. And that is, what can we afford to build and what can we afford to operate? And so the answers to those two questions have really informed the schematic design and it informs the components that we will show you tonight that are being designed in the, in the building. And so now let's launch into that project update section. So conceptual design, that was accepted by the City Council on June 26th, included a number of components. I will highlight them really briefly right now because we go into significant detail a little later on in this presentation. So it included a lounge, a lobby, a community hall, a highly desired component from the community, a place where people can have large birthdays, retirement parties, et cetera, something that can seat upwards of 200 people, a potentially a game room, an early childhood education space, classrooms, multi-use classrooms with dividing walls and movable tables, a conference room, a gymnasium, a high school regulation gymnasium with two courts, a fitness and wellness area, a year-round pool, very critical to the design. And so as the community knows, there is currently a aquatics facility and then a gymnasium recreation facility. This design calls to marry those two uses together in one building. And the community vision was really for an indoor pool. Given our climate and having year-round pool use, we currently have a seasonal pool. There was extreme interest to have an indoor pool, and so that is in the conceptual design. There was also in the conceptual design, an outdoor pool. And so we are in the middle of figuring out frankly, what can we build with the $50 million grant from the Community Foundation? And the answer is we can have a very beautiful building, and we will have a very beautiful building. But part of the other answer is we cannot build everything that was in the conceptual design, the community vision for $50 million. The construction costs frankly just do not make that possible, nor does somehow the program elements will fit together. And so we, we want to be very transparent about that. And we've, we've worked long and hard on this. And so we're here to present some preliminary information on what we feel that we can fit in the base of, of the building for $50 million and what may be enhancements. And we've been working very hard to essentially scrub the budget, look at analysis to figure out what can go inside the base and, and what may have to be pushed out and what can be phased in a Phase 2. And we'll talk about that specifically. And so just really quickly, for, you'll see a lot of red notes on this slide. This is what was presented to council in June of 2016. This is the conceptual budget. It calls for a $50 million project budget, but $50 million is not what the construction cost. It's really a construction cost of about $39 million with about another $10 million and various other costs, some of those being soft costs, architects, consultants, things of that nature, another being site work. In the conceptual design, there was a lot of site work. There were envisioned improvements to the park that were not immediately tied to the building, but very desired community improvements to the park. And so we're, we're taking a hard look at those improvements to the corporation yard and parking needed for the park. And so now let's talk of what we call our Venn diagram that we've had a number of iterations on. But in this diagram, you have two circles. You have an inner circle and an outer circle. The inner circle includes four primary components of the building. An aquatics facility, a rec, an aquatics facility, indoor and outdoor pool, a recreation, various classrooms, fitness, fitness areas, a group X area, the gymnasium. You have those site improvements, and then you have the community center. And as we step through those, seeing what we can include in that first, what we call the base option, in recreation and aquatics, there are synergies between having patrons that will use our facility for both aquatics and recreation. And so what really was pushed onto the outer edge and base was a walking track. And you'll see in our schematic designs, a walking track above the gymnasiums on that second level is a very, very nice amenity to have. It is something that provides a significant benefit to the users of the building. But it is something that has, just frankly, for the cost and what we need, has been pushed out into that potential Phase 2 because that can be phased. When we talk about site improvements, there were a number of things that we'll show in detail in prior, in subsequent slides, such as additional parking, which we do need additional parking for this building. So that, that is really included in the base. But what's really being pushed out, and you'll see in a little bit, are things like an added drop-off zone that would be great for the park and for the building. But when we look at the cost to construct that, that can be phased. But one of the things for site improvements that we are including, that you will see, is actually protecting the creek. So we no longer have a creek in the middle of parking spaces and an open channel. When we took a look at all of the community center aspects, both the classrooms and the meeting spaces, there were really two components that were being pushed out into that enhancement option. One of them was a community lounge. One of the things about this building is that there will be a number of things in the building that will be fee-based in order to frankly be able to operate it and not increase the subsidy that we already provide to running the recreation programs. And so the Aquatics Center will be fee-based, the gymnasium will be fee-based, a lot of the group X programs and the classes will be fee-based. But we didn't want to have a facility that it felt like you had to pay money to use this facility. We really wanted it to feel like a building that anyone in the community could enjoy, whether you were paying a fee or not. And so one of the things that's included in the schematic design is an enhanced community lounge, and we'll talk about that. But essentially, a, a community gathering space at the beginning of the building that everyone can enjoy. And then a dedicated community hall. Again, I said a very, very highly desired aspect of the building. But unfortunately, when we took a look at, at what components of the building really needed to be in there to have that appropriate balance between operating revenue and construction costs, the community hall was really pushed out to enhancements. And so we've, we've been working hard on that, and we'll talk about that. And lastly, aquatics. Indoor pool absolutely was very highly desired, and we can fit that in the base. But what can be phased and come later is a second pool. And so I'll go over really quickly the programmatic elements. But our existing facility, the gymnasium is 30,000 square feet with our outdoor pool at 10,000 square feet. Really to get the totality of what the community envisioned is the base plus enhancements. We're really talking about building a 45,000 square foot building. We are currently, as I said, undergoing the analysis of how much of this base we can fit in to $50 million, and then how much is pushed out into enhancements. And what you'll see in this next slide is beginning in August, we really have a decision point, which is what is included in the building that we are constructing for the community? Because while there are components of the building that are appropriate for the Phase 2, there are components that really we need to make a decision in August on can we build. The primary items of that is, this is our phasing options. And so this is a frontal view of the building. And what you'll see, and you'll see in greater detail, is the second story portion right here toward the east side is really where that community hall will be. And we really need to make a decision in August of this year, are we, are we including that in the building? Because that can't be done as a Phase 2, whereas the outdoor pool can be done as a Phase 2, and some of the other elements can be done as a Phase 2. And so right now, those enhancements that really can't be done in a Phase 2 are approximately $4 million. To build the entire building, those enhancements right now are running at about $7.5 million. And so I'm uncomfortable telling the community what we have as a $57 million building right now because, again, we are in the middle of doing a hard analysis of what we can fit in that 50. And we've done a number of things, and we'll talk through a couple of them right now. In the initial community vision, there were essentially six areas of site improvements. One, there was building the building, right? This is where the current Aquatics Center is, and that's where the current gymnasium is. And there was relocating to have one building there. The other item was adding additional parking near Tom Lara Field. The other item was adding, reconfiguring City Parkway to protect the creek so the creek is no longer in the middle of parking spaces, and also providing a reconfiguration of the parking that's immediately adjacent to the building. But there was also in the community vision, adding this drop-off zone where there was a protected drop-off area for users of the park and users of the building. There was also looking at that parking lot that's adjacent to St. Andrews Church and seeing can we restrike that lot or potentially acquire through some seeing, can we restrike that lot or potentially acquire through some use agreement with the church more of the land for parking? And then relocation of the memorial statue. And so as we looked at those elements, there were some that we realized that we could phase and save money. And so what has been included in the base is the additional parking which is needed for the building, protecting the creek and reducing, and reconfiguring the parking in option three. What has really been pushed out into a subsequent enhancement is the drop-off zone, the additional parking, and we have included additional funds for relocating that memorial, but we're looking to really supplement those funds with some of our public art or park funds. We are also doing things like looking at some of the work, for example, the concrete work that, and the asphalt work that is scheduled to be done when the project is constructed, to see if there's any of that that we could do sooner as a piggyback to a city contract, thus doing it in today's dollars versus dollars from two years from now and saving on some costs. And these are what we're now calling the optional site improvements. And so right now, I will turn it over to our architect, David Snee and Don Merz, to go through a few more slides on the layout and the aerial of the building. But I really want the community to know that we will have a beautiful building. We have some decisions to make in August on exactly what components are included in what we build and what can be phased. And we're really scrubbing the budget and doing the operational analysis on that. And so right now, I'll turn it over to David.
Thank you, Jovan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff and community. We're privileged to be here and have this midway schematic design presentation. So this image here of the site aerial is just a part of City Park, and we just started, we, how, what a beautiful, beautiful asset the park is to this community. It is just a gorgeous, thriving, natural and recreation opportunity. We see here, of course, the existing Veterans Memorial Hall and the outdoor pool and City Parkway. And this next image shows our updated schematic design plan as it stands now, and this shows both the combination of the base options and the enhanced options as well here. And so this is a direct continuation of the input we received through the conceptual design process with the thousands of community comments and input, the preference to replace the existing recreation center in the location of the current Veterans Hall, to have an efficient operational building that has the aquatics features integrated in and adjacent to, being further integrated into the hillside going towards the south, which is to the left in the ball field, and having the landscape and the open spaces flow around the building here as they do now and actually being improved when the relocated pool becomes additional open space there. So the features that the city manager presented included the, really fixing the entry drive and parking, relocating the creek into a natural environment that gets rid of the hazards and of having it mixed with the parking today, having the lovely community festival-sized plaza as you do now in front of the recreation center, perfect for the Easter festival and Christmas and other as well, and the indoor and outdoor aquatics all flowing nicely together. And here's the replacement rotary pavilion as well. So all of the features fit together really in a beautiful, harmonious one that we're really doing is improving the recreation aquatic center and improving the park simultaneously. So this is one cross-section of part of it. So as the park rises up towards the hills across this building, looking into the hillside, it rises gently as well, and looking to have both the outdoor plaza where we said for community events and the outdoor pool working nicely, all nestling up into the trees. As we talk about building on all the input, we said we wanted this building to really be something that reflects and celebrates the values of the community and the cherished, cherished park. And so by having this hillside scheme, we've developed a hillside concept, which is to nestle up into the beautiful rows of eucalyptus trees and to take each of the three main program components, the aquatics, the recreation and the community features, and each of them to have their own identity architecturally with its own roof form, breaking down the mass, making it more fitting into the scale of the park, and also having optimal solar orientation for solar energy power generation on its roofs. So now we have these very preliminary schematic design concept sketches here. These are, we're only about halfway through schematic design. We've rendered these with some shade, shadow and colors. It's all very preliminary here, so we know things are going to change. These probably have a little bit more glass than what we're actually going to have later on, but it shows the general feel of trying to reflect and respond to the community comments for the types of colors and materials they have. We asked for accents that might have wood or accents of stone, and we're showing those here. And so here, we're on the relocated drive, looking at the end of the reconstructed parking lot, looking at what would be the community features, the community hall here on the second floor with multiple classrooms on the ground floor with a porch and other terraces that look out over the park. As we continue our swing around to this, we see the new entry. That is where the community lounge that the city manager described would be right as you enter. We're seeing the roof form of the gym space, and we would come into the lobby space and the lounge space and be able to look into the gym as well. Staff areas are right there, classrooms to your right, staircase and elevator to take you up to the community hall on your right. And what we have here is similar to one of the greatest qualities of your existing recreation center, the beautiful clear stories or the higher windows that let you bring in natural light and have the dappled light looking out into the trees. That same strategy is being enhanced upon and reflected here with what we call clear story windows up high, bringing light into the gym as well. We also are some of the, so many of the spaces that are below and are in the current building and are really cramped and not very attractive spaces, we have our group exercise room where you'll be able to see people doing exercise classes and things. And as you're, you'll also see there's, in the fully enhanced version, there's a walking track that Dawn, my partner, will show you shortly, and you'll be able to, as you're driving by, see the activities that are going on inside. You see, oh, there's a community party or festival going on, there's exercise activities, people walking around the track, doing other programs. So it's really something that will be, inspire people to come and stay fit. And now, standing at the southernmost corner, looking back at the aquatics, having year-round aquatics, indoor pool and outdoor pool as well, in the enhanced version where we're able to get both of those. This outdoor pool is a feature that can be phased. It might be lawn in the first phase if the funding is not for that, but the design here and the planning and the sequel work is all looking for the full vision here and all the opportunities. So here we have deck and opportunities for recreation, athletic and leisure swimming, both indoors and outdoors, and seeing how the outdoor spaces flow around the building. And with that, I'll turn it over to my partner Dawn, who will walk you through the plans as they're developed.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, community. Just stepping back one minute, I think one of the beauties of this scheme and the massing that's been developed for this project is how, at the front of the building, at the entry of the park, it has this lovely civic presence. It's not too big, it's not too grand, but it does speak of civic pride, and civic pride from the community of San Bruno. But when you get to the backside where we have the natatorium, which is adjacent to the park, opening up to the rest of the park, the valley beyond, the building kind of nestles down, and you really get that sense in this view. The outdoor pool is really opening up even if it's going to be a deck for a phased portion of time, but really opens up the park where the current pool really creates a barrier there. And so just wanted to pause there before we talk about the stacking diagrams. So we have two sets of stacking diagrams that I'll walk through. I'll spend a little bit more time on the first set, which is basically explaining the base option. And then as we go into the second set of stacking diagrams, just really point out the differences when we add the enhancements. And so just orientating ourselves, we have Civic Parkway along the bottom of this slide, looking at the main entry into the lobby lounge with the conference room. The right side of the building, as you looked at the shed roof and the clear stories that early massing would be the community center side. We have two classrooms and then a smaller classroom, which had an adjacent outdoor secure play yard for early childhood recreation. We have the high school gym, which also has two cross courts. The big difference from your current gym is that it actually has a divider in it, so you can program both sides concurrently with two separate programs. We have great location for the staff bar located right here at the front with secure points, moving down to the natatorium or to the aquatic swing, which is then separated by the locker rooms. The locker rooms have access both from what we call the dry side of the facility, the gymnasium side, or also from the natatorium side. Included in the aquatics program is two party rooms adjacent to the pool, which have access both to the indoor pool and the potential phased pool for the outside as well. So really nice, efficient floor plan laid out really nicely on the site. As we go up the stairs in this diagram here, on the left side, there is stairs going up a half a level to the natatorium, which then there would be an elevator that accesses both that interim level as well as the second floor level. Thank you. Which has the elevator here and the stairs, taking us up to either the natatorium level, which is located right here. Half a level up is the natatorium level and the locker rooms going up to the top level. We have fitness and cardio weights, which has lovely connections, transparency to both the natatorium side as well as the gym side. Not necessarily acoustical transparency, but visual transparency is what we're envisioning there. Additional staff space as well as the group exercise space located right here, which will have great visual connection to the outdoors and upon people entering the park and seeing the facility as well. So moving on to the enhanced option, we've shown the expanded lobby lounge. So the conference room, which had been located here on the first option, is now moved to the second floor. The rest of the first floor is very similar in configuration here. Additionally, we've shown the outdoor pool at this level as well. And that would have nice direct connection from indoor pool to the deck, potentially with glass doors that could open up on nice days so that there's total connection from indoors to outdoors there. And then moving up to the second floor is actually where we have more of the enhancements that were shown, including the elevated walking track that surrounds the gym. And this is one of the options that could be decided on later. You can construct the gym with the structure to support the gym coming in as an alternate.
The walking track.
The walking track, yes. The community hall is kind of the one Jovan was mentioning, is kind of almost impossible to do as a future addition on the second floor, how well it's integrated into the project. So really at the end of schematic design, needing to decide if it's funded and moving forward or not. We also have a second set of elevators and the conference room located over on the community hall side, which then gives us independent access to the community hall in that portion of the second floor. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Joanne, who's going to walk us through the individual spaces.
Good evening. I'm going to take the opportunity to tell you what's going to happen in all these spaces in the building. So we're going to start with the lobby and lounge area. This area will serve as a reception area for access to the pay side of the facility. Program registration desk for picnic rentals, after-school programs and camp registration will happen in this location. We'll also provide a lobby space off for the community access side of the facility. This space will have restrooms, allow for park users, a location to rest and charge their devices, enjoy a beverage or a snack, and a great informal gathering place for the community. This lounge space will also serve as a registration and check-in area for larger community events. The gym will provide a high school regulation basketball court with two minor basketball courts that will be divisible by a drop curtain. The drop curtain is an essential feature to this program area. It provides a divisible space allowing for multiple activities to occur at the same time. Activities such as basketball, volleyball, indoor soccer, pickleball can all be scheduled without balls crossing over into each other's play areas. This will allow for additional rentals, programs, kids camps, drop-in basketball opportunities, and could also serve as additional functional fitness area for boot camp and TRX type of fitness classes. This multipurpose space could also be utilized for large events such as teen dances, Goblin Grotto, conferences, as well as the emergency shelter. The locker rooms. The locker rooms are strategically situated between the pool and gymnasium, providing central access to the main areas of the facility. We'll have lockers of various sizes with shower facilities that are essential, an essential amenity to attract patrons. These shower facilities are also an essential component to the emergency shelter location for the community. The indoor pool will be comprised of six lap lanes with a large stair area for access and bench seating that will serve as a designated spot for swim lessons for younger age swimmers. Adjacent to the stair area will be both a spectator seating section as well as the party room space. The party room will be divisible into two spaces so that they can be rented by two smaller parties or one larger party, and it will also be utilized for lifeguard and service trainings and staff meetings when it isn't being rented. The indoor pool will accommodate multiple types of programs for community participation, including lap swimming, water aerobics, swim lessons, and both kids and master swim teams. The pool is being designed to allow for hosting swim competitions with removable starting blocks and scoreboards. There will also be a viewing area from the upper level into the natatorium, allowing for different vantage points for observing aquatic programs and activities. The new design, the design of the new facility designates multiple community classroom spaces. There are two medium-sized classrooms that can be expanded into one larger meeting space. Community programs that will be scheduled in these areas include enrichment classes like art, music and dance classes, as well as lifelong learning programs, CPR and AED certification courses, and will also be used for smaller group events and parties. The small classroom is being designed with the potential to be a licensed early childhood education space with a children's restroom and a designated outdoor play area. Although the classroom might not initially be programmed for this purpose, it is important to be designed with these elements in mind. The other programming possibility for this space would be as a childcare area for patrons of the Wreck and Aquatic Center to drop off their children while they enjoy their workout. All of these classrooms will be utilized for our very popular summer, winter and spring summer children's camps, and will provide much-needed breakout spaces for different activities and programs. In the upper level of the facility, there will be a designated cardiovascular area with multiple types of fitness equipment, including stationary bikes, elliptical machines, step mills and treadmills. There will also be free weights and other weight, weightlifting machines and apparatus to accommodate all fitness levels. This fitness-focused area of the facility is essential to revenue generating potential. The group exercise area is a mirrored room with specialized flooring that will accommodate various types of fitness classes, including Zumba, Pilates, yoga, TRX, kickboxing and boot camp style workouts. Dance classes can also utilize this space when it is not, and when it is not being programmed, it will serve, serve as an additional stretching and cooldown area for patrons. The community hall and conference room. The conference room is a very popular location for smaller community groups to use to conduct their meetings, seminars and trainings. Groups such as youth sports leagues and boards, Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, Toastmasters and other nonprofit groups will continue their use of the conference room in the new facility. The community hall, designed to be on the second floor of the new building, will allow for scenic views of City Park. It will be a community gathering place accommodating large events like our annual father-daughter dance and the holiday boutique. This community hall would also be a popular rental site for large parties, conferences and other events. A small catering kitchen is included in the design to accommodate for food service that is a popular amenity for these types of rentals. The elevated track, the indoor track allows for a climate-controlled workout. Whether you use the track to run or walk, it allows for you to go at your own pace on a surface that is usually more gentle for your joints. The track will overlook the open gymnasium, which would provide views of other recreational activities taking place. And finally, the outdoor pool. The outdoor pool would operate seasonally during the summer months. Programming for the outdoor pool and the splash pad area with Programming for the outdoor pool and the splash pad area with spray and other water features would include community, open recreational swimming, would absorb the high use of lessons over the summer months, and accommodate the extremely popular summer swim camps. Special events such as movie night at the pool would also be hosted in this area. The outdoor pool would allow for overflow and program relocation when hosting swim meets. I'm going to turn it back over.
So it's pretty exciting where the progress we're making and how, what a vibrant facility this will be and how beautiful it's shaping up. So the purpose of these slides now is just to talk about how we're integrating into the park and to understand how we're integrating into the landscape. A few points just to discuss about the trees. So there are hundreds and hundreds of trees in the park, and we're going to preserve the vast, vast majority of them. Of course, some trees will have to be removed, particularly adjacent to the existing recreation center where the aquatic center will be built. We'll be showing how here, again, we can look at all the trees that are remaining, that we're still very much wanting this building to be nestled into the park. And it's going to have trees behind it, trees around it and in front of it, which will really be quite lovely. So it should fit into the park nicely. Some of the brighter green trees here are replacement trees. For any tree we remove, we'll be planting new trees in its, in its stead. And so just showing the aerial and highlighting some of the key trees that we'll be preserving, and we'll show you some ground-level views of those right there. And of course, all the other trees that aren't highlighted around the building, of course, will remain. And so showing the couple building, a couple of the trees right in front, which will be between the parking and the new entry. This beautiful live oak that will be here, with the ones where the green dots are being saved here. And of this, this is right, and we are working very hard to do what we can to save this specimen redwood here. It's a, a project we are getting details from our survey to make sure that we are the appropriate distance away from the eucalyptus on the uphill side by Crystal Springs and to still get the fixed gym, the dimensions of the gymnasium and aquatic center. So we're, we're really trying to work around that with this tree, which we'll see, which is the one with the green arrow on the top, is a really tall and beautiful specimen. We, we hope to be able to build the building around the, around this particular tree. And of course, the sister city Narita cherries, we will look to the ones that are still doing well to relocate those or to work with your sister city to have new ones replacing them. And so I bring this to, back to the city manager.
So that is our project update. As for next steps, we're here today with an update for council. No formal action requested of council, but we did want to provide the city council with this update in a, in a public forum that is also accessible to the entire community and will be replayed on, on the city's channel one. April 16th is our next internal steering committee. Again, we will be at the park and recreation committee on April 17th. We have our fourth advisory committee meeting of those eight individuals. Again, that is two members of the city council, two members of the San Bruno Community Foundation, two members of the park and recreation commission, and two members of the planning commission. We'll have our fourth meeting on May 7th. And then we will do architectural review. We're planning for that over May 20th through the 30th. Planning commission on July 16th, and again, back to the city council for a decision on the schematic design. So again, we are in the middle of working to bring this amazing asset to the community. There are a lot of challenges, there's tons of opportunities. Construction costs being what they are, and operation decisions. We are, we're, we're working very hard to include as much as we can in that base building, but also the, the decision we made to carry both designs through the schematic process. So we really have a decision point in August on kind of what are those enhancements we include. And frankly, we're looking to do them all. I mean, it would be lovely if we can do them all. But we will be coming to council with kind of a fine analysis of the budget and options to consider. And so that is where we are, and we are open for any questions from the, from the council.
Any questions for council? Maybe not.
Still a lot of feedback with that speaker, I think it's not in its usual spot. See if I can move this back a little bit here. Okay. Thank you. So first off, I wanted to thank staff and our consultants for a really well-put-together presentation. It was informative. The only other thing that I would request, looking at that schedule of when the next meetings happen, if we could get maybe more regular reports, definitely nothing at, at this scale, but just periodic updates, maybe monthly, just kind of showing where we are in terms of progressing against our timeline and also our expenditures. So see how we're tracking on, on our expenses as we move through the process. But other than that, I think this was a really good update.
Yes, good evening. Construction costs, right? So I recently heard where construction costs are going up around 10% right now. Does that sound about right? Plus or minus a few percent?
If I may. So construction cost right now in the Bay Area, based on a recent analysis done for San Francisco region, anywhere from 5% to 6% escalation per year is what is currently being projected by an array of cost estimators in this area, including contractors.
Great, or not great, but. Well, that's my concern. Here we are, we're going to, where, where are we looking to obtain the funds to provide what we all want? Where, where are we anticipating some impact fees, some? And when are we going to? We know we're going to come up with the design by August, but is that the, the time where we have to figure out it's a go or no go on everything else?
Sure. I'll take that. There are a number of sources. One on the escalation in costs. Yes, my microphone is on. On the escalation in cost, it is important to note that in our budget costing model, we do both have a contingency reserve and an additional reserve on top of that. And they, the designers can correct me if I'm wrong. I know it's a 25% reserve. I think it's a 10% contingency and a 15% reserve, or is it a 15% contingency and a 10% reserve?
It's 20%, 10% escalation plus 10% contingency. But within our design estimating budget, there is another design contingency, but that is being assumed to be consumed as part of the development of the design.
So for construction, we have included a 20% cushion there. And so that actually ratches up every, every square foot we add. And we're using a cost dependent on the elements that is anywhere from $700 to $1,000 per square foot when you add in everything. And, and so in our market, doing a municipal facility like this is very expensive. We certainly have the community foundation that has committed to provide the city with a grant of $50 million. I would say contingent on us developing a business plan for how we intend to operate it, and that is a part of the work that we're doing now. But with the full community vision as you show, as was shown, it's more than 50 million. And so we will be bringing you in August what that additional cost will be. We will also be bringing council a information and a recommendation on what can be included in that base. There are a number of additional sources for those funds, be they're community benefits or this community recently adopted development impact fees. And when we had that development impact fee discussion, one of the items was is that the development impact fees go into specific buckets. And there is a bucket for recreation or park facilities that could potentially be used on this. But the city council, if there's not enough money in that bucket, could actually take a loan from another bucket of community benefit in order to make this happen. And then there are a number of other ways where we can leverage financing and funding to get this done. What I would submit to you is that the staff and the design team is doing everything that we can to have as many elements in the building as we can. And, and we absolutely know that that community hall was a highly, highly desired aspect. And we're doing everything we can to bring the council with options where we can include that community hall in the base building.
Thank you. Looking at page 15 in the presentation, the item number five for alter and expand the church parking, that cost of $900,000, is that for acquiring the property and doing all the parking improvements to it?
Sure. Don, why don't I take that and you pick up? There is no intention to inquire, acquire the property. We have had meetings with the church, and they are not interested in selling the property, nor do I think we have the resources to purchase it. What we have talked about is if it is mutually agreeable, a long-term lease of the property for parking. And we are working with the church because the church has some uses of their additional land that they would like to consider, and that just may impact how much parking is made available. But that budget that Don will speak to, one of the things we said in the presentation is that we are looking for ways to leverage items that are in the project to do them sooner versus later, thus save costs so it's not in dollars two years from now to when we're constructing that element, but it's in today's dollars and maybe piggybacked on an existing city contract. Some of those parking lot and asphalt improvements are some of the key things that we are looking at to see can we do those sooner versus later, even if we use some of the project funds to do them, just because frankly, it will cost less.
Got it. Thank you. So when we're building this amazing center, we're going to have to obviously knock down the current existing center. So where are all the programs going to go? And how, how much is that going to cost for us to maintain the services? I'm just curious on, that's a cost that is going to be there. I'm just curious to hear what we're thinking.
Absolutely. So the initial conceptual design and budget did not include relocation costs, and that was just a fact. And so of that $50 million in the preliminary budget, that did not include cost of either one, renting a space or renovating a space for relocation. And so we know that, and we have been working on that. And as a part of the analysis, I'm going to get the numbers wrong, so I'm going to have Don give them. We have a, a portion of the budget that we've looked at and analyzed and found funds to cover some of that cost. And we are looking to, at various areas where we can potentially relocate to, that will have a cost to us. And we are having those discussions, but absolutely, we need to find a temporary relocation. I think it is totally possible that all of our programs will, may not be able to be run during the 20 to 22 months that we are, that the new facility is being constructed. For example, our aquatic facilities, there may not be an aquatic facility that we can lease or use in the interim. And so some of those programs may not be run during that construction period that we're down. Some of our other programs may go to the relocation facility, and some may go to other facilities, but we're, we're working on that. And so, Don, will you speak a little bit at a high level about the budget?
Yeah. So just with entering into schematic design, what had been identified as allowances for soft cost at the conceptual design and city permits and fees? We have identified an allowance that can be attributed to the temporary facilities budget, and that amount is about $350,000 that we've been able to take from identified percent allowances that have now become known factors. I think one of the big ones is actually working with the building department and identifying the permitting cost for the plan check and having enough information now so we can actually tie down that number, take away of the allowance, and take the additional remaining budget from that allowance and apply it to that.
Okay. Last, last request. I am a little concerned that from April to August, there's no feedback to the full council. And if, if there was some way that we could, I know Councilman Salazar mentioned that of with the financial side, but it would seem like, I guess I'm also in favor of having some update to see, rather than waiting to August of like, well, this is what we got. But I'll leave it to you all to figure out when is the best time for that to happen. But that's something I'm interested in. Thank you.
To the chair. First of all, great report, presentation by all parties that participated in that. You know, as a, as a member of the subcommittee, I appreciate Councilmember Medina and Salazar's comments because it's very clear to us, because we've been so involved in the process. And I just want to say that in the last years, we've had now four meetings, and the team that Javon has put together, the internal team with staff, has made a huge difference. And I really feel proud and confident of the process and the direction that we're going. They give us an opportunity, and when they, when I say they, as, as council members, the planning commission, et cetera, as other members from the public, who are all part of that process, get to listen and then voice our opinions and feedback. And we all seem to be uniformed, and staff already seems to be on the same page. We're asking great questions. They have the answers already because they've already discussed it, they've thought about it, they've thought about it many different ways and come up with the best solution. So it's difficult in this presentation, there's so many details, but I, we're on the right track. And I, again, I just want to thank everybody who's been part of it, from group four to staff. And I also think it was also another important piece in bringing in Griffith to oversee this project, to ensure that as this project moves along and we are spending money on very expensive things, that we're getting the product that we're paying for, that it's happening in the right way. And somebody's, in the very beginning discussions, knows exactly what we're expecting and is there every day to make sure it's happening and us to stay on schedule. So thank you so much.
And summary, thank you for the report and the update. I think we've heard just, you know, it's kind of the trust but verify. And so if there's more of a, I call it a check-in and that kind of some update, I think as Mr. Salazar said, it doesn't need to be this elaborate, but something that just gets kind of a synopsis, a kind of an update, something as far as that, because the expenses aren't really at this point, but it's just the progress. And I think that's something that we've talked about. Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and move on. Thank you. We'll move on to consent.
Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implement in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
Any items to be pulled or any speaker cards in regards to consent picking? Deputy?
To the chair, I just want to comment on one item before their approval.
Okay. And then is there anything that wants to be pulled?
Items, yes, I'm sorry.
For a separate vote, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. You're, which item?
Oh, that would be item E.
Okay. Fine, I'd like to pull item F and G.
For separate votes.
Separate vote.
Not together, but individually.
Yeah, I think that's probably the best.
Michael, any?
I don't want to pull anything, but I was going to ask if, does, does Lauren want to make her comments before we approve the remainder or?
Yes, I'm going to go there and see if anything else.
Nothing else pulled.
Sure. Since there's, yes, I'd like to pull G, and not pull them, but make comments on G and H.
Okay. Okay, so right now we have two items for comments only that can be taken in one action under consent. So first of all, we'll go to E, which is adopt the resolution approving the fiscal year 1920 city council priority focus areas and related strategic initiatives. Laura?
So I just wanted to comment, you know, you can't say something enough. I feel like when we communicate to, whether it's I feel like when we communicate, whether it's staff or the public, I think it's important that some items are that important and get discussed more than once. So I just wanted to pull this, or not pull this item, but discuss this item before approving it, to say that how proud I am of the work that staff has done. I'm putting together the proposed city council priorities, focus areas, and related strategic initiatives. This is a 95, 94-page document that breaks down into every area of city staff, whether it's the transit corridor, whether it's the cable, the community strains, protect and improve the community, proactive planning for the future. It is documented what we are doing and our goals. And it is 94 pages, of which it doesn't provide more than one or two items per page, which means that staff's got a lot on their plate. And this reminds council what our focus is on an annual basis, what our goals are, and whether at the end of the year, we can feel successful in terms of the team effort that everybody's putting towards. And this document is something I review on a regular basis, I share, I think about, I keep, because it is that important that we as a council and staff stay focused on what our goals are. We can't, and I know we have issues and we're going to always have issues or come up, but these are the things that we can make our priority, get them done, cross them on the list, and move forward so that next year, we have new priorities and things. I don't want to talk about the same thing year after year, or hear somebody from the audience say, we've been talking about this problem year after year, and we keep talking about it and we don't do anything. But I feel with a document like this, with the focus that staff has, we'll get there. So again, thank you, and this is an important piece to us.
Anybody else want to comment on that item?
To the chair.
Yes, Marty. Please.
So I want to echo those comments. We had this study session, and there was just a handful, three members from the public at the meeting. So what I'm concerned about is, is how do we attempt even harder to make, to make the public feel welcome that we want your input? Because that document is what we're going to do. That's what we're going to budget. And I believe with our new city manager, we have a course of these meetings that we're going to be having as we approach this budget. And I think it's the most, in my years here in San Bruno, it's the most engaging effort to get the public's input. And I'm going to ask staff to hopefully ramp up the public information to try to get the public to attend these meetings. So it's an incredible amount of work. So it takes a lot of time, and it's easy later on to hear or for people to complain about, well, you're not doing this, you're not doing that. And complaining on social media is your right, but coming to a council meeting and attending these study sessions is the appropriate way. So those are my comments.
Okay. Nothing else on E, then we'll move to H. Adopt resolution accepting this by gas pump station enforcement rehabilitation project as complete, authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with San Mateo County Recorder Office and authorizing release on the construction contract retention in the amount of 127,852. Irene.
Wow, that was great. I just wanted to pull actually G and H, mostly because they are very large public works projects that we did, and both of them came in under budget. So I just wanted to acknowledge that for staff, that they did a great job doing all the things that make that happen and making sure that the projects came to fruition the way they were supposed to. So that was what my comment was.
Anything else on H?
Through the chair?
Yes, Marty.
Was that G?
H. That was H.
G and H.
But just H for now.
Correct.
Anything else on H? Okay. So is your action to approve on consent all items with the exception of F and G?
Through the chair?
Yes.
I apologize. I could throw in a comment so we don't have to pull item G separately, since it's already been pulled.
Okay, sure. No, no. Okay, so I'll go to item G, if that's all right with the council.
So.
Resolution accepting the San Mateo Avenue water and sewer replacement project as complete, authorizing the filing of the notice of completion with the San Mateo County Recorder's Office and authorizing release of the construction contract retention in the amount of 240,654. Marty.
Thank you, Mayor. So I originally pulled this project a few months ago. I was concerned about the quality of the work for different elements on that project. Consequently, I met with the city manager, Grogan, and public works director, Jimmy Tan. And it's my understanding the contractor has returned and repaired the areas of concern. I was, it's a little hard for me as a former public works inspector to just easily accept something that doesn't appear to be at the standard that it should be, that the standard that I held contractors to. But in our downtown, it's also understandable that the work that we need to do there is extensive. And provided that currently the work is done for the safety of the residents, I believe that as we move forward, that we have to identify the funding to really provide the downtown that everybody wants. So once again, it comes back to costs. Those costs keep on going up. The longer we wait for something to be fixed, the more expensive it's going to be. So I wanted to thank staff for following through and getting those corrections made. Thank you.
Okay. So a motion on all approval of consent with the exception of F. Any action?
Motion to approve.
Motion made in second to approve all items under consent except F. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. According to that as a 5-0 voice vote. Now we'll move to F. Resolution adopting list of projects fiscal year 1920 funded by SB 1, the Road and Repair Accountability Act 2017. Marty.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So I pulled this item because I was questioned as I was walking in about, well, is this for just the one street that we're going to pave this year? And clearly it isn't, but I was hoping that at this opportunity, we could talk about the cost for that one street and the plan for the remaining streets that are going to be in our paving project for this year.
Sure. Sure. I'll have our public works director, Jimmy Tan, come up and address that.
Director Tan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. There's currently a $4 million worth of paving going on right now in the city for the 2018 street rehab project. Next year, there'll be a slur seal project. I don't know what the overall cost is at this moment, but that's being designed right now by staff. This item in front of you today is in regards to the Senate Bill 1, which is SB 1. And every year, we come to city council to adopt this resolution because it's a requirement by the California Transportation Commission, and the resolution needs to be adopted for the use of this funding. So currently, for fiscal year 1920, we're anticipated to receive about $760,000 in SB 1. And with the, you know, discussions that we had with the council subcommittee back in 2017, the funding was to be used for some of these failed street locations. So with that, you know, we had a matrix and a prioritization breakdown, a point system that we derived based on that, you know, the current street that we're planning to reconstruct is, it's shown in the staff report, which is Popular Avenue between Crystal Springs and Allen Elementary School. So the total reconstruction cost, based on our estimate, is about, close to about $700,000 or so. Therefore, there's only one street indicated in the staff report.
Anything else on IMF? Any action by council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve IMF. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Okay, 5-0 by voice. Okay, so we have a conduct of business, which a lot of folks have been waiting on, and I know that folks may need to, want to get some water, utilize the restroom facility. So we'll take just a couple-minute break so everybody's a little more comfortable, and we will reconvene, let's say, in about five minutes. Okay, let's reconvene the San Bruno City Council meeting of April the 9th, and we're now on conduct of business.
Conduct of business, item 6A, appeal of community and economic development director's determination related to parking for the 406 to 418 San Mateo Avenue Development Project.
Thank you. Mr. Medina.
Yes, good evening. I've been advised by our city attorney, Mark Zaffarano, that due to the proximity of my residence to this project, that I will need to recuse myself.
Just for folks to understand too, because I had heard something this weekend, when a mayor, council member, vice mayor recuses himself, it's because you live within a radius of a project or an activity that's occurring. And so to not give any suggestion of a value pro or con to yourself personally, you're stepped down and recused. It's not that Mr. Medina or another council member doesn't want to participate, doesn't care about the area or the community, but by law and legal advisement that we received, this is why he has recused himself and why you may find at times that we have to do the same as well. Okay, with this, what we're going to be doing is we're going to go ahead and make it very clear that it's important to this council, and we want to hear from everyone. So we want to hear from staff, we want to hear from the appellant, we want to hear from the community. The council will then go ahead and have its questions and deliberations. So what we'll be doing is we're going to have staff presentation first. We're going to see if council has any questions of that presentation, and we're going to hear from the appellant. We'll have 15 minutes. There's going to be an opportunity for council to ask members of, persons of the appellant, if they have any questions on their presentation. We're going to open it to the public. My understanding is, is we have 15 speaker cards at this time. That may go up. We're going to be giving two minutes a speaker, and we're going to then, if staff needs to respond to any of the appellant, if necessary, and then the city council will then take action on deliberation. Again, if you wish to speak and you have not submitted a speaker's card, which is the yellow, I'm sorry, yellow-green sheet to the deputy city clerk, what I want to say too, on the outset, again, it is important, we want everybody to be heard. So our expectations is that everybody be heard equally and respectfully, that we refrain from applause, we refrain from comments, whether you agree or disagree with any speaker. Anybody who stands at that podium or on the mic has that respect that we should be giving to hear his or her comments, irregardless of what they may feel on the project, or staff, or the appellant. So that is what I will ask, and if I need to pause for a moment to remind us, I will do so. But I'd like us to conduct this in a respectful, orderly fashion, and that's what our community believes in, and that's what I'd like to have us maintain tonight. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and ask that we have our staff presentation and city manager.
Sure. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, city council, Javon Grogan, city manager. We are here tonight to hear an appeal of a staff determination. The city's municipal code section 1.32 allows the appeal of any staff decision directly to the city council. And so the project owner of this project has decided to avail themselves of that option, and we are here tonight to hear their appeal. Darcy Smith, our community development director, will give the presentation, but myself and our other staff members will be here to answer any questions for staff. But on the outset, I want to say that Saris Regis and Cal Pur, the owner of this project, have invested a significant sum of money into this community, and this project is, will be a catalyst to our downtown revitalization. And so it is nearing completion. I think, as Darcy will go through, and the community knows, this project was the first adopted by the city council and approved October of 2014. Building permits were issued September of 2016. And so I think a lot of people in the community are exciting, are excited to see this project come to completion in the 83 residential units and the 7,000 square feet of ground floor specialty restaurant or retail space really come online. But as you'll hear tonight, the project owner and developer are proposing a use that staff feels does not fit with the project approvals. We've had a number of meetings and conversations about that, and unfortunately, we have a disagreement. And so we are here tonight to hear that appeal, and we will present a staff presentation now by Darcy Smith, our community development director.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Darcy Smith, and I am the city's community and economic development director. I'll be making the staff presentation tonight on this appeal of my determination related to the parking exception planning application approval, which was granted in 2014 for this project at 406 to 418 San Mateo Avenue. But first, let me give you a brief overview of the project. As the city manager mentioned, this project was originally approved back in October 2014. It was approved by the city council at that time, and it included 83 residential units and individual tenant spaces, which at that time were approved for either specialty restaurant or retail uses in approximately 6,975 square feet. There's also a subterranean garage, which has 106 parking spaces. Those are only for the residential uses. And there's no parking provided on the site for the customers or the employees of those ground floor specialty restaurant or retail uses. And a parking exception, which will be the subject of the discussion tonight, was approved to allow that parking reduction from the city's adopted municipal code standards. And in September 2016, the building permits were issued, and construction has proceeded ever since. As you can see on this elevation, there's the individual tenant spaces on the ground floor and the apartments on the upper floor, which make it the mixed-use project. So I'll go through the presentation for, outline for tonight. First, I'll cover the objective of my specific presentation and go over the appeal process for the hearing tonight. I'll present the background related to the project, especially the parking exception, and I'll provide the analysis of the appeal and staff's viewpoint, and I'll end with time for question and answers. And I want to emphasize that while I'm presenting the item tonight, Mark Zaffarano, the city attorney, worked extensively on this, as well as Matt Newbaumer and Roy Bernal, the chief building official. Matt Newbaumer has been the project planner on the project since 2014, as well as Roy, who's been here many years working on it, and they can answer any questions that come up related to the plan application or building permit. The objective of my presentation is really focused on the relevant facts before you, with this appeal, give you the rationale for my specific determination, which I made in November, and give you the options for the council to consider tonight. As I mentioned, this meeting, we'll start with my presentation, and then we'll have questions. Then we'll move into the appellant's oral presentation. You'll have the opportunity to make questions for the appellant while they're up at the podium. Then we will take public comment after that. We will have an opportunity for staff to provide a response, if necessary, to any of the appellant's presentation or public comments, and then you will have the opportunity to deliberate and take action. There are three options for your action tonight. You may grant or deny the appeal, or you may continue it for more information. So a quick summary of the key facts that led to this appeal. As I said before, the permits were issued for construction in late 2016, and construction proceeded. In July 2018, the city was first contacted by Seapot Restaurant Representatives at the Planning Division, and there was an inquiry about the establishment of a single large sit-down restaurant in the entire ground floor within all the individual tenant spaces. The city proceeded with meetings with both representatives of Seapot and the project developer, Saris Regis, and that spanned August, September, and October. And we discussed that proposal during that time. As a result of those conversations and my coming on board in November 2018, I felt it was important to issue a formal written determination on this issue, and I did so in October 2014. My determination, which I'll go over in more detail later, stated clearly that the proposed restaurant did not conform to the approved parking exception, and the restaurant could not be approved at a building permit level. The letter detailed the exact city process that the project would need to go through at the restaurant, and that- with the restaurant, and that requires review and action at a public hearing by the Planning Commission. It's not a staff determination. And I noted that my estimation of the zoning code requirement for that large sit-down restaurant was approximately 100 parking spaces, based on the current zoning code requirements. And I pointed out that that information or that parking quantification was not presented or discussed when the parking exception was originally granted, reviewed first by the Planning Commission, then ultimately granted by the city council. And in January 2019, the developer appealed the staff determination in regard to that large proposed sit-down restaurant. So the project plans are shown here. This slide shows the entire site, but it's important to just focus on what we're talking about tonight, which is the front of the development along San Mateo Avenue. So I'll provide just a little bit more detail here. But as you can see in these plans, which are what the council approved in October 2014, while there are some individual tenants that have tables and chairs, as you can see here, those are consistent, in staff's view, with a specialty restaurant. And I'll go into that definition later, but that is a use that could potentially have tables and chairs, like a donut shop, or an ice cream shop, or a deli. But what you really need to understand is that the overall plans do not show a single large sit-down restaurant, and they don't show all the building and mechanical and utility items that would be associated with it. Those would include exhaust hoods and vents, large refrigerators, sit-down restaurant-sized ovens, and commercial restaurant and items. So just to emphasize the background that a plan application goes through, there are conditions of approval that are imposed on all planning applications, and they're quite extensive. In order to ensure that the development complies with those, the city requires a summary of hearing to be filed after the project's approved. And that vests the project approvals and gives us a recorded document that's been signed. And those conditions of approval run with the land and any successors and interest in the property. So like this project, which changed hands from one developer signature that entitled it to now Saris Regis that obtained the building permits and is building it. This is a binding document that runs with the land and any and all successors and interest of the property. And it's important to just emphasize one specific condition of approval, which is condition of approval number three, which clearly states that the project has to be built according to the plans, which were viewed and by the Planning Commission ultimately approved by the city council in October 2014, unless a modification is approved by the city. And in this case, while there were very minor modifications approved by the former director, this modification has not been approved in writing that would explicitly allow a sit-down restaurant in this tenant, in the tenant space. So the emphasis tonight is on the approved parking exception, and it's important to emphasize that that was approved because the parking did not meet the zoning code requirements. And explicitly for the commercial uses, there was no onsite parking. The city's record shows that that parking exception was granted on the analysis that the parking requirement for those individual tenant spaces on the ground floor would have either specialty restaurant or retail uses. And our calculation of that parking requirement at the time, based on zoning code standards, was a range of 23 to 38 spaces. That's a range because you could have either retail or specialty restaurant uses. It's important to emphasize that the city relied on the project plans in this calculation when approving the parking exception, and also representations that were made on the record by the project applicant at that time. And I'll go over those statements later, but he clearly, the applicant at that time before the approval bodies clearly stated that there would not be a sit-down restaurant. So I'll show you the land use categories that I mentioned. The first one is retail. I think most people would typically say that's a store or a business that sells goods, but under our zoning code, it's the retail sale of any article, substance, or commodity. So it would typically be a store that's selling a good to a consumer. And then we have a specialty restaurant definition in our land use category, and that's a little bit different than restaurants. I just want to really emphasize that. It's a retail establishment, which primarily sells food of a single or limited variety that's consumed at or soon after the time of purchase, irrespective of whether the establishment provides an area for onsite consumption. So listed in the zoning code are single, single variety vendors, such as a donut shop, a delicatessen, or an ice cream store. So a restaurant, which is again what was not approved in the project and what's being proposed now, is, is different than that specialty restaurant. It's the typical retail establishment, which sells food and/or drinks for consumption primarily upon the premises, and specifically has 50% or more of the premises floor area used for table seating and counter seating. So that is what is proposed at this point by the project developer. So as I mentioned, the building permits were issued in September 2016, and construction proceeded. And it's important to note that those building permits, anticipated future tenant improvements would be done through separate building permits. So the, there was a shell that was constructed for the retail and/or specialty restaurant spaces, but there were no actual permits that showed the physical improvements in that space. But the plans that we issued don't show things that would normally be built with for a large sit-down restaurant as part of the overall project construction. That would be the venting and all the hoods that are required, and other improvements that are associated with a large sit-down restaurant, such as the large ovens and the large refrigerators, and so on. So jump to July 2018. That's when staff was first contacted by representatives of the Seapot, inquiring at the Planning Division Public Service Information Counter, can we establish a sit-down restaurant? And until that date, we'd really, the city had proceeded assuming that there would be tenant spaces with either specialty restaurants or retail uses, and that would be on the ground floor, consistent with the project approvals and those issued building permit plans. So again, as I mentioned, we sat down with the developer and representatives of the restaurant, and we had many discussions, trying to understand exactly what they were proposed, were proposing, how big it would be, how many seats they would have, whether they would occupy the entire space or part of it. And I want to emphasize that those were, those were staff meetings, they were discussions, and the city didn't ever provide any written confirmation confirming that we would be able to issue a building permit for their proposed sit-down restaurant. And we didn't grant any approvals. The, they stated they wanted to submit a building permit, and we said, well, we, you know, we need to examine this issue further. So when I started in November 2018, I did that analysis. I made a review of the whole record, and that included the project approvals going back to 2014, the project plans, statements made on the record by the project applicant at the Planning Commission meeting and City Council meeting, which are available for anyone to view on YouTube. And I also looked carefully at the zoning code requirements, which are the basis for any land use approvals in the city. And they apply to all projects in the city, and they run, they run with the project. So I reviewed that, and I issued my formal determination letter, as I covered earlier. And my goal was to really clarify the exact process that this proposed use would go through. And this is a normal course of business in the Community and Economic Development Department. We're contacted by businesses every single day, asking, what is the process I go through for the approvals? And so I rendered that determination. And to summarize my determination, what I said was a proposed restaurant is a permitted use under the central business district zoning. However, the sit-down restaurant, as proposed, does not conform to the project approvals. And specifically, that parking exception, which was approved by the city council. The exception was approved on the basis and on specific calculations that that ground floor space would be occupied by either a retail or a specialty restaurant use. And there was a parking study that was done of the availability in the city parking facilities nearby, and it, it looked at that quantification of stalls and the demand. So explicitly, there was no approval for a large, single-sit-down full-service restaurant. So my determination, again, was that the proposed use did not comply with the approved plans, that to entitle that approved use would require a modification to that originally approved parking exception. And that goes through a public process, involves a public hearing before the approval body. And it's not a change that, as a director, I felt comfortable making at staff level. So I emphasized the process that would need, they would need to go through to approve it. And I emphasized that we would be unable to approve it at a building permit letter, level, again, that it rose to necessitate a modification of the project approvals, which is common on larger projects. So the applicant did not submit this parking exception modification, which is why we're here tonight. And just so you know what would go into that, should that be pursued in the future, we would start with looking at, again, analysis by a consultant of the availability of parking stalls in the vicinity, in publicly accessible stalls. As you know, we completed our parking management plan in January, which was reviewed and accepted by the council. And we would look at different parking management strategies that could be proposed by the developer in conjunction, potentially with the city. But we do not have that information before us, since the application wasn't submitted. So instead, we're here tonight, the property owners representative filed the appeal in January pursuant to the municipal code section 1.32, which allows appeal of any staff decision. And the appeal letter maintains that the parking exception allows this specific use, the proposed large sit-down restaurant. And as detailed in the staff report and the staff's attachment to that report, there's information presented in detail about why we refute that, that argument. But the basic analysis is that this is a material change to the approvals, and the property owners do not have the privilege to make changes to the project that are not consistent with the project approvals or the project record. There were past modifications of the project plans that did not explicitly include changes to the uses, as requested here. And the applicant did also provide some information this afternoon, which was presented to the council, documenting those modifications. I just want to emphasize that we did review them, and there were changes made to the plans, but there was no explicit modification to the uses allowed under the parking exception. And I want to emphasize those were changes that were made at staff level, again, without public meeting. And that is not the process that staff can support going forward with this use. All land uses in businesses in the city are required to provide parking in conformance with the zoning code. Typically, that's onsite, but if they can't provide it onsite or can't meet the municipal code, they go through a parking exception process. So in this case, we approved a specific parking exception. It's always approved for a specific use, and we quantify the demand. And for this project, that approval specifically was for the specialty restaurant and/or retail use. As I mentioned previously, the sit-down restaurant is a different land use category in the zoning code and has a different parking requirement. And again, the zoning code explicitly states that for all uses in the city, if the use is changed to a new use, then parking has to be provided for the new use. And we have this conversation almost every day at our Planning Division counter. So that concludes the staff's analysis. Want to emphasize again that the parking requirement is higher for this sit-down restaurant, and that the plans were not approved for it. One really key thing to examine is sort of what was told to the public at the public hearings, because we have these public hearings, as you know, there's extensive public comment, and the applicant is often asked questions to make statements on the record. And in this particular case, the applicant at that time was asked specifically about this space, and he said, quote, "These retail spaces are not designed for sit-down uses", unquote. "We don't have the huge venting." He said, "We have sit-down casual takeout areas, which would be consistent with the specialty restaurant definition." He was asked a question about what type of retail are you expecting or proposing? And, and the respondent answered, "Yeah, whatever's allowed under the CBD, but by design, we have not designed big kitchens with big vents," which is consistent with the project plans. And last, there was another question where someone asked if there's going to be commercial tenants, if they don't have big kitchens, how are they going to remove their garbage? And a bunch of questions, again, about sort of the items that go into these tenant spaces. And the applicant at that time said, "So somebody can't come in and say, 'I want a full gas kitchen, I want six burners.'" And last, at the council meeting, again, many questions came up about these spaces, and the applicant at that point said, quote, "I did want to point out that the retail being proposed is not a formal sit-down white cloth, tablecloth restaurant. These spaces are not designed for large kitchen," unquote. So that all comprises the record that led to the staff's analysis to make the determination. I want to mention that the building permits were submitted in February, and those substantiated staff's analysis of what we thought we would, we would be reviewing. There's a single sit-down restaurant, a total of 6,795 square feet, that's the entire ground floor space. There's an occupancy load of 220 persons, and the count of seats is approximately 198. There is a large commercial sit-down restaurant-sized kitchen with all the items that you would normally see with that type of restaurant. So I just want to state that we did provide a follow-up letter to the applicant of the restaurant, informing them of this determination, and that we wouldn't initiate the plan check review of the permit until it was resolved. So in conclusion, the sum total of the evidence in the project record is that the parking exception that was approved is not permit a single sit-down restaurant to replace the tenant spaces, which were approved for either the specialty restaurant or the retail uses. And in conclusion, the council tonight is being requested to take action by making the staff recommendation to deny the appeal and uphold the Community and Economic Development Director's determination related to the 406 to 418 San Mateo Avenue Development Project. And that concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. You have.
Thank you. Are there questions in regards to the presentation by staff at this time from council?
No.
No?
Not this time.
Okay. All right, then, with that, we're going to go ahead and move to the appellant oral presentation, which will have 15 minutes, and they can utilize that time once they begin. But also, just for the record, as in with any appeal, there's a California law that requires the council, the city council disclose any relevant ex parte communications, which just might mean outside of here, any correspondence or conversations that we may have had with the appellant to be on the record. So I will start to say that, yes, I have had conversations within, with the project as it has embarked. Obviously, we've long time in waiting. But yes, so I've had phone conversations, and I have had two site visits to the site. Obviously, this theater back then was open in, what, 1930? Was closed around 74, demolished the facility back in 2015. So I was, had interest to see the site. But I did walk the site on two occasions, and I have talked to, a couple times, to the appellant. Is anybody else?
To the chair. I will also, I have walked the site as well, and haven't really had many conversations with anybody regarding the property.
Anything, Michael?
I have not communicated with anybody since that picture was taken.
Irene?
Same.
Okay. All right, now that we have that on the record, we'll go ahead and, once the appellant speaks, we'll have 15 minutes, please.
Great. Well, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, city staff, and the community, thank you very much for hearing our item tonight. My name is Drew Hudasek, and I'm with Saris Regis Group in Northern California, and we represent the ownership of the property. Just as a way of background, you know, I was a member of no less than two committees that studied downtown for the TCP, including the Citizens Advisory Committee. And as you can imagine, every time we met, the conversation was about how do we bring more vibrancy to downtown? What do we need to bring people downtown? And restaurants were certainly at the top of the list. By way of background on our company, we're a private San Mateo-based company. We have a long history in San Bruno. Almost 20 years ago, Tamsin Plume, our attorney, whom you'll hear from in a moment, and myself, walked into City Hall, met George Fiscardo, Frank Hedley, and Larry Franzella, and talked about the Navy site. We bought the crossing in late 2000, we bid on it late 2000. Had a great partnership with the city over a dozen years or more, and are very proud of that project, not only for what it is today physically, what it is as a community, but all the tax increment money that it brings into the city on an annual basis. You'll also hear from one of my partners, Todd Riganini, at the end of the presentation. Tonight, we find ourselves in a possibly the most uncomfortable position we could possibly be in. We often work with cities, we have a reputation for being collaborative, creative, and, and almost never have we come to a council with any matter where we are opposed to the staff recommendation. And I thank Darcy and Javon, who've worked with us, you know, very open and honestly through this. But essentially, the vested entitlements for this project that we relied upon, and upon which we got investors, including the same investors that were mentioned before, to bring almost $60 million into downtown San Bruno, with the idea that we were going to be an early project, quite possibly the first project in the TCP, to help move things forward. And that included the 83 apartments and the retail space. Signature Land Advisors processed the entitlements, as Darcy mentioned, in 2014. But what's most important to us is that those entitlements granted a parking exception for the commercial space on the ground floor. for the commercial space on the ground floor. The commercial space allows restaurants, and I will leave it to Tamsin and to the lawyers to hash out exactly what a restaurant is by definition. And the parking exemption or exception applies to 100% of the commercial space. So we have the right to put Seapot in the building as is. Most important in the timeline is in 2015, modifications were made that related to that condition of approval number three that talk about, the planning commission looked at it, the city council approved it in 2014, but the community development director has the right to make modifications. We did that in December of 2015. We did that after David Waltering, the community development director at the time, had determined that we were asking for things that needed to be modified. He had the discretion to do it, and for the sake of his own desire for concurrence, he held a meeting that included Connie Jackson, the city manager at the time, Mayor Jim Ruane at the time, and council member Ken Ibera. And Todd Reaganini and I, I think, are the only two people in this room who attended that meeting. That group of people enthusiastically encouraged us to put anything and everything we could in that ground floor space. The letter that came out of that meeting modified the ground floor space. It did not modify the parking exception. That is why Seapot is permitted to go in the building as is. The interior was modified, the exterior was modified, and again, both parking and the commercial space were mentioned in that follow-up letter. Tonight, the city is not being asked to approve a right. Tonight, the city is basically being asked to strip or remove a vested right that we already have. We admit and we understand that there are parking issues in and around downtown. We attended all the parking meetings in the few recent months. We understand there are two independent things going on. Residents are having issues. There's talk of resident parking programs. There's talk of enforcement. Those are independent problems. We are happy to talk to the city about how to address them. We've proposed different ideas. That is an independent issue from the parking on our restaurant space. We are not willing, as a matter of tonight, to condition our restaurant or to condition Seapot's occupancy of the space on any new parking conditions. So with that, I will turn it over to Tamsin Plume, a partner with Holland and Knight, who will talk a little bit further about the technical details.
Hello, everybody. I'll also try to use technology, which I'm not very good at, so if I make a mistake, I apologize in advance. Good evening, Mayor Medina, members of council and city staff. My name is Tamsin Plume. I'm a partner with the law firm of Holland and Knight. I have practiced land use law for 20 years, primarily for developers, institutional lenders, and investors. One of my specialties is performing due diligence for investors when they acquire complex development projects. Oops. Okay. I can do this. I can do this. As Drew mentioned, I was part of the team that performed the due diligence on the Crossing project for Saris Regis, TMG Partners, and Farallon Capital Management when they purchased the property from the Navy, the Crossing project from the Navy in 1999. It's a really long time ago now. I still remember rushing to City Hall to meet with Drew and George Fiscardo before the public auction. And to be a part of that process all those years ago and then take my two sons to play in that playground years later has been incredibly rewarding. I talk about it with my kids every time I drive by. They, in fact, adore hot pot, so I'm really looking forward to eating with them at the Seapot restaurant in the future. I performed the due diligence review of the Plaza project before Saris Regis purchased it in April 2015 from Signature, as everyone has mentioned, who processed and obtained the original entitlements in October 2014. Like Drew, I am really surprised to be here tonight after all these years. As we did, at the time, as we did our due diligence review, the project was entitled but unbuilt. So one of the areas that we focused on as a matter of standard diligence for any diligence project for any investor was to confirm the range of allowed uses and the parking requirements. We've submitted a detailed appeal letter as well as a detailed response to the staff report. I hope that our response made it to you this evening. Staff, Mark, did our response make it to council?
Yes, it did.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it's a lot.
Forty pages, yes.
Yes, it's a lot, sorry. I promise I will not recite all of that here tonight, but I will call out a few highlights in the next few minutes. To summarize, my professional conclusion in April 2015, my professional conclusion now is as follows. The commercial space was and is permitted for any use permitted in the central business district. I don't think that's actually in dispute, including a sit-down restaurant, one of a wide range of expressly permitted uses. The term specialty restaurant was never used in the written record or conditions of approval, period. The commercial space was authorized to be one contiguous space or up to five commercial spaces for any of these permitted uses. As Drew noted, and I'll discuss a bit more later, this conclusion was confirmed by the community development director Waltering's approval of one contiguous space in December I will get to my beautiful slides in a minute. No parking is required to be provided for the project's commercial space for any permitted use, and regardless of whether that space is one or up to five spaces. The personal statements of a representative of Signature, taken out of context and never confirmed in the written findings or conditions, is not binding. It would not have bound Signature, and it certainly doesn't bind a bona fide purchaser for value. The transit corridors plan, a duly adopted specific plan, not the city's inconsistent and admittedly out-of-date municipal code, provides the correct parking standards for the project. As part of the 2014 entitlements and in its adopted housing element, the city expressly committed to updating and bringing the outdated municipal code into compliance with the specific plan, but it has not done so. Under the TCP, it's noted that the parking standards for sit-down and specialty in all restaurants is exactly the same. It's not different as it is under the current outdated municipal code. The potential concern with residential parking was acknowledged in 2014, and at that time, the city committed to implement programs and policies to address those concerns to support this pioneering project and the revitalization of downtown, but has not done so. In brief summary, under the 2014 entitlements, as they've been modified, Seapot is an expressly permitted use of the commercial space, and no parking is required. Just as a refresher and a brief reminder, much of this has been said in the staff report and before, so I will try to be very brief. But as shown on the slide, in October 2014, staff described this project as "the most significant new development in downtown to alleviate physical and economic blight and play a key role as a catalyst to revitalization of downtown." I've got the pointer here, I can use this here. Staff also described to council at that time, this is city staff speaking, not anyone else, that the project would replace the former El Camino Real Commune Theater and three adjoining restaurants, and that the uses of the site resulted in a 97-space parking deficit. And this is a quote from the hearing. It's really important to make this point. There are no express limitations on the allowed uses or the parking exception, and the written record at the time, the entire written record up to the time we got the November 28th letter that we are appealing tonight, used the term specialty restaurant specifically to describe the parking exception. We do note, as Director Smith has noted, that the term restaurant is defined as a retail establishment. Oops, sorry. I'm not good with this clicker. A restaurant is a retail establishment. And as Director Smith noted, there is a special, separate definition of specialty restaurant that's not described in the written record anywhere. Since there is no express conditions, staff has had to resort to implying a condition that doesn't exist in the record. They rely heavily, as you heard tonight and in the staff report, on the personal statements of Signature at the dais. And they do note that he also said, "This is a pioneering project. The retail is going to be really hard. We need flexibility." And any use, we need any use to be allowed, that's allowed in the CBD. The descriptions on a figure that show a table here and there are not the same as "this is a specialty restaurant." No one would know that. And I certainly would never have advised my clients of that at the time and did not do that. It was absolutely acknowledged that this was a pioneering project that would be difficult and needed flexibility and support from the city. I'll also note that the city has and knows how to adopt a condition where they don't want to allow a sit-down restaurant and did so in October of 2018 at 111 San Bruno Avenue. A restaurant use shall not be permitted at the ground floor or commercial space because the project doesn't have enough parking to meet the use. If we'd had a condition like that, we would have known what to do, but that did not exist and does not exist in the record. Nope. There we go. As Drew described earlier, following the 2014 entitlements and after they purchased the property, they obtained the express approval of modifications to the commercial space to one contiguous unit with other key changes supportive of a single restaurant use, including a single water meter, a Grease 2,000-gallon Grease interceptor, and vents, among other things. In those letters, which are, these are the two letters that came from Director Waltering under his authority under condition number three, after informal consultation with the development subcommittee, in those letters and in all of those meetings, the city had a multitude of opportunities to identify and call out any limitations on the use of the parking exception, but didn't do so, and I would submit because that's not what was originally intended. As Drew also noted, and it was absolutely clear from the comments earlier this evening and from the parking meetings and everything else, we don't dispute in any way that residential parking issues are very real for the city. But it is important to note that those problems, as stated in the city's own parking study, which was described also and presented to this council in January, I attended that meeting as well as the rest of the team. It's clear that those changes really are related to changes in the residential uses of San Bruno, and it's really the residential parking spilling over to the commercial parking, not the other way around. And those are changes since 2014 that have occurred that weren't understood at the time when the record was created. Residential parking concerns were, in fact, raised in October 2014 in the hearing by now council member Marty Medina. And in response to those questions and comments that he raised as a member of the public, Director Waltering explained to the council that the city was planning to implement programs and policies to address residential parking and support this project and the revitalization of downtown. And again, no condition was added or identified at that time. It is important to note and state that we think that it's inappropriate for the city staff to elevate the out-of-date municipal code over a duly adopted specific plan. This isn't the correct legal hierarchy. And if the city does intend to change the TCP standards, it needs to process those amendments through the normal course with appropriate notice for vested projects like my client's. Until then, the TCP is not guidance that can be lightly ignored. I do believe that the staff's determination is revisionist in nature and reverses the course of over four years of interpretation and understanding. As the November 28th letter itself acknowledges, and I quote, "This is a change from what may have been communicated to you in prior communications from the city." Staff. Which is telling.
If you'd like to wind up your comments.
Okay, I'll be very quick. Under applicable case law, a court will not read conditions into language that doesn't exist, and the city knows how to do this. My client has made over a $60 million investment in commercially reasonable reliance on the entitlements after professional due diligence. They have now purchased and built the project, entered a lease, and will suffer material financial damage if they can't proceed. And we appreciate residential parking remains a concern, but blocking this restaurant is not the long-term or short-term solution. And I don't know if there's time for Todd to say a couple words.
No, you're out of time.
Sorry, Todd.
But thank you very much for your comments, both of you. All right, at this time, we've heard the appellant's oral presentation. Now we're going to have questions from council members on the appellant's presentation.
Can I ask a question? Does staff have any comments to some of those comments that were made?
Well, no. We go through the process. So we're at council level, yeah, for the appellant.
I was still going through the response email. I didn't have a chance to go through it before, but there was a lot of material that was provided in there that I hadn't had a chance to look at yet.
Quite a bit.
So if somebody else could go.
I was also going to just say for the record that there are emails that council did receive today, and they were printed and shown to council as well, just so that anything that was received today was shown. And we did receive it just for the record. If not, we'll open it to public comment.
Open it to public.
Yeah. We're going to go ahead and open it up to public comment at this time. And again, as a reminder, folks, we're going to have two minutes per speaker. What I'd like the city clerk to do is go ahead and call up at least three, so we can have them in line, so we can keep the process going. And then, just because council's not saying anything now doesn't mean that they won't have questions after public comment.
Okay, the first three people are Teresa Lai, Russ Steins, and Janice Zhang.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, my name is Teresa Lai, and I am living in San Puno City. Yeah, I support Seapot Restaurant. It is a good restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Russ Steins, read a couple things. I hope we're all learning something tonight. One thing I want to make mention of, this building has already added a fourth floor of lofts, which I imagine also increased parking by at least three or four spots. So they've already, besides being given the exception that they were given by telling us that they were going to do all these things, most of us in the community kept quiet because we felt like they were looking out for this community, and that's not what I'm seeing now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi. Hi, my name is Janice Zhang. I support Seapot. So I love Seapot, my family and my kids too. So I hope to help in San Puno. Thank you.
Thank you. Next three speakers, please.
The next three speakers are Andy Chao, George Lee, and Zhang Gao.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andy Chao. I'm here to support Seapot Restaurant and help and support Restaurant to be approved to doing business in San Bruno City. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is George Lee, and I'm supporter for Seapot. We need this kind of restaurant around these areas for convenience, so we don't have to travel far from the other city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few things to say. First of all, let me introduce myself. I'm an architect. I did a few projects in San Bruno. I did not work on this project, though. I noticed that there's a lot of vacancies in downtown, and it's very, very hard for retail business to succeed nowadays due to online shopping. I think it's a great opportunity for a successful restaurant to locate in downtown, and it will create vibrancy and it will attract a lot of consumers. It will also benefit other retail businesses along El Camino and San Mateo Avenue. The city should not discourage local businesses to locate in downtown. It will be contrary to the city planning for downtown area, including the transit corridor plan. And small businesses need certain pay. It was not mentioned in the approval plans in 2014 that 100 additional parkings needed. We're not talking about five more parking, 10 more parking. It's 100 more parking required now when the restaurant is ready for the tenant improvement work. Last but not least, I hope the city council can make the decision strategically and support local business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next three speakers are Ron Lee, Nori Java, and Eugene Zhou.
Good evening. My name is Ron Lee. I'm here to support Seapot Restaurant. I think it will bring vibrancy and a good tax base to San I think it will bring vibrancy and a good tax base to San Bruno, and we need a restaurant like that to bring more people to come in, bring business and all that good stuff to San Bruno. I, you know, this is my first time here in San Bruno, and listening to all these things happening in San Bruno, I'm really quite impressed with the city of San Bruno, how it's growing and how it's getting better and better every year. Thank you so much. I hope you can support the project.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Nori Java, and I'm here to support the appeal. I'm here to speak to you tonight about the continued stopping of good projects because of our archaic car-centric policy decisions. I'm a resident of San Mateo County. I don't live in San Bruno, but I come here often to the restaurants, and I work in professional development and land use consulting. I have a master's degree in urban planning, and I study projects around the Bay Area. It is time to move forward with policy, making policy in a modern bicycle transit and pedestrian-oriented world, not just talk about smart growth and transit-oriented development, but actually have the policies and codes that support it. I just got back from two weeks in Belgium, where policymakers rely on these three modes for land use decisions, and they don't focus on parking, and it works. Here we have a successful restaurant user and a very successful developer with a great reputation. They're invested in this city, and they're willing to take the risk, and they're confident that a restaurant will thrive in this location without additional parking. That speaks volumes, because the restaurant business is volatile, and investors want their projects to succeed. It's time for San Bruno to look for solutions that supports the city's commitment to smart growth, ways to say yes instead of ways to say no. I also want to just mention, I have a friend who submitted an email tonight. Her name is Ciará Sisneros. It probably didn't get into your packet. She lives walking distance from downtown, and she just wanted to add that she supports this project, that there is plenty of parking nearby and transit, and it seems like the ideal place for a restaurant without additional parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eugene. I'm one of the partners of Seaport. Some of you might know we have a successful restaurant in San Mateo. We are actually very excited to bring that to San Bruno, you know, to create the vibrancy that you guys talk about. So, parking aside, I think it's something we can help together to find a solution. I don't think it's that big of a problem. You know, we, it's 7,000 square feet of space, but we're still considered a small business, and we just, you know, we want to do honest business, and we want to help the community and work together, win-win. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next three speakers are Wayne Ma, Stephen Seymour, and Chris Holmes.
My name is Wayne, so I'm coming to support Seaport Restaurant. And the restaurant is pretty important for our community, because I think the restaurant is important because it means jobs, it brings more jobs, and also the restaurant can be, bring our reputation for nice restaurant.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Stephen Seymour, and I'm speaking as a resident that lives near this proposed restaurant, not as a commissioner, as I was appointed this evening. You know, I've been to Europe, I've been to Belgium, I've been to the Netherlands. We don't have a bicycle community like those countries do, unfortunately, and I would like to see us have more bikes, I would like to see us have bike trails, I would like to see us get out of our cars. I agree with some of what these people were saying, but that, we don't have the infrastructure for that right now. And a restaurant that would bring in possibly 100 vehicles, I'm not sure where they would park. I'm frustrated, because I would love to see a restaurant like Seaport in San Bruno, but I live near, and there's no parking on any of the residential streets. If our streets were clogged up, I'm not sure where we would park, and I also think it would have an impact on our property values. So while there's an investment that the developers made into our community, I value that investment. I respect them for investing in our community, but I just don't see how a restaurant like this can be in the bottom of a building like this when the parking was waived as part of the approval for this building. That's, I would ask that you not grant the appeal. It's just not the location for a restaurant like this. Again, I wished it was. I really wished it was. I wished we had the parking that a restaurant like this would require. I wish we had bicycle lanes. I just don't think that this is the right place and the right time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Chris Holmes. I'm a commercial real estate broker. I work in San Francisco, or excuse me, in San Bruno markets as well as around the peninsula and the Bay Area. I want to reference that, you know, we have a very quickly changing retail environment. It's become extremely difficult to find quality businesses, willing to occupy and operate businesses in retail space, especially those that concede and succeed and have staying power. Seaport is a retail tenant that can succeed in this location. It's worth noting that more than 60% of my business these days is on food and beverage and fitness uses. Traditional retailers are really non-existent at this point, and I believe this trend will continue. It's particularly worth noting that many of the projects that we do work on around the Bay Area are experiencing long-term vacancy due to the lack of traditional retailers and the upward tick in traditional, or excuse me, in restaurants and fitness uses. A sit-down restaurant like Seaport in the downtown core of public transit-focused San Bruno would be extremely valuable, would help to bring new customers to San Mateo Avenue, and would help to support other businesses already in the downtown core. The project location serves as the entrance to San Mateo Avenue and should feature an exciting, lively, and attractive business that welcomes you to the downtown. This project in the city, as the city manager said previously, would be a catalyst to the revitalization that I believe the downtown core is looking for. I do ask that you please support this appeal and grant approval for Seaport to operate on San Bruno Avenue. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
The last group of speakers is Nathan Chan, Sandra Perez-Vargas, Marty Medina, and Steve Chen.
My name is Nathan Chan, and I'm from Milbrae, the neighboring community just to the south. I just want to bring up that I'm pleased to see that San Bruno has made this commitment to investing in this transit corridor project. And I think a logical conclusion of that is that you want to enable and encourage people to take public transit to access the amenities that are available in that project, and it is totally feasible. I got my haircut at Annie's Hair Salon just a couple of weekends ago, and I rode ECR from Milbrae down to Annie's and took ECR back. Samtrans has made a lot of investment to make ECR an extremely reliable transit bus stop, sorry, bus line, so it is something that, it is one reliable transit option. At the other end of San Mateo Avenue, you have Caltrain. So for, if there's any site where you can and should be waiving the parking requirement, it's this site. I would also suggest that if we are going to build 100 extra permanent parking spaces for this development, what you might end up doing is inducing demand. People will think, oh, there's parking available, I can drive down to San Mateo Avenue now and park there. This will potentially create a situation where you are asking for more vehicles to travel to this area, compounding the parking and traffic difficulties that you're already experiencing. If people know that there's probably not going to be parking available and look to other transit modes, then that's one way to solve the parking issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, Sandra Perez-Vargas. I would totally welcome this restaurant. I looked online, it looks magnificent, the food looks awesome, but unfortunately, the city has already waived minimum requirements, and three of you on council did, former mayor Ruane and Kenny Barra. So we are already in the hole for parking, and if we get more cars coming in, it's going to paralyze our area. And earlier tonight, residents were speaking. We go to San Mateo Avenue today, and everybody's double parked, and they're double parking, flashes on, and doing their shopping. I wish I could say that we could look into the future and do this, but right now, the city has done nothing to prepare for this. We knew these apartments were coming, we want to attract people without cars, yet we have no biking lanes, we have no shared bikes, we have no shuttles. We could go to Google, they might provide a free shuttle that would bring this in. So I would say, yeah, absolutely, we want a restaurant like this, but the impact is going to be negative. Is there somewhere else in San Bruno where possibly they could go? And this is a reason to be alert, because now we have Mills Valley, Mills Park, that's going to be developed. We've been told certain things aren't going to happen. What's going to happen then if, like the former city manager didn't do her due diligence? Obviously, if this is where they find themselves today, putting this much time, effort, and money, or who else hasn't done their due diligence? And we want to know as residents that you're looking out for us, not developers, not restaurants, and that you're planning ahead. Atlas Pizzeria, they came in, great intentions. They can't use their full restaurant, only a portion of it, because they were told you have too many tables planned. You can only have a set amount because parking is not available for your customers. So they're probably in a hole there. And in Milbrae, we just have to look there. They opened up a restaurant, a beautiful Chinese restaurant in El Camino. They said the same thing, we're not going to attract any cars, yet they flowed into the parking lots, into the residences, they had to get valet parking. Second, go to sanbrunonow.com if you want to find more of what's going on in our community. So tonight, you have an opportunity to prove. Who are you representing?
Could you wind it up, please?
That's what I'm asking. Who are you representing? Think about your residents.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Medina and council members. For the next few minutes, I'll be speaking as a San Bruno resident, Marty Medina, Garden Avenue, not as a city council member. Because I live within 500 feet of the project, I am recused in this appeal. Therefore, I'm over here. In case anyone doesn't know, all regular city council meetings are on YouTube, so I reviewed the October 28th, 2014 meeting when this project was originally approved. I spoke out at this meeting as a concerned resident and pointed out, the staff's parking survey indicated the parking availability in the adjacent neighborhoods was already approaching capacity. Furthermore, I stated I strongly disagreed with the council's findings that this project would not create a hardship for its residents. I understood then, as I do now, that revitalizing downtown is important, providing housing is important. However, equally, or perhaps more important, is minimizing impact to our residents. That's definitely more important than a developer's profits. I am not against any type of restaurant, but as clearly detailed in the staff report, the proposed use of this restaurant with a 200-seat capacity is not allowed, not to mention the parking that is required for the workers. There remains many options for this commercial space, and any proposed changes need to be approved. This project, as originally approved, was already going to make parking difficult for the residents. This increase in parking would make parking horrible. It's unbelievable, and if anybody tried to go park down in that neighborhood today, you would find out. I find this appeal amazing, but not surprising. It is a learning moment for all of us as we review future development projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other speaker cards?
I think there is one gentleman that hasn't come up, Steve Chen.
Mr. Chen here.
Okay, maybe he left.
Last call. Okay, are there, is there anybody else who wanted to speak on this item who did not turn in a speaker's card? If not, then I'll go ahead and consider that the public comment has been heard, and everybody has had an opportunity that wished to. And now going to staff. Staff have any response on the presentation?
Sure. Again, Jovan Grogan, city manager. I'll make some brief remarks, and I will allow Darcy and Mark to add anything. I think from the outset, it's important to note that the city is not denying Seaport's use because of Seaport Restaurant. I think the proposed restaurant could have been a 200-seat Jill's Burger and Fries restaurant, and our analysis would have been the same. It's also important to note that in the director's determination to the property owner and the developer, we did not deny the restaurant use. We actually said that there is a formal process to go through and modify the parking exemption, because that is not what was included in the plans, that is not what was proposed, and there were statements on the record actually to the fact that something very similar to what is being proposed would not happen. The property owner decided not to do that, and instead decided to use Municipal Code Section 1.3.2 to appeal the staff decision versus go through the formal process, which requires a hearing, which requires analysis to fully vet what the parking impact is, what mitigations there could be, how many people would potentially use transit to get there, but that is not the option that was decided. I think another important point to note is the developer today has submitted to the city and showed on board a letter that was received to them from the city on December 9, 2015. And there is one bullet, the third bullet down, that talks about interior modifications that the developer and the property owner are using to say that that statement approves a single sit-down restaurant. I submit to you that that is not true, and I will read what that one bullet says. It says, "One contiguous commercial space fronting San Mateo Ave." It does not follow that, say, for use for a 200-seat sit-down restaurant. In the plans, what was shown in Slide 9 of the staff presentation, were the initial plans that called for the lobby to actually break up that commercial space. At the corner of Taylor and San Mateo Ave, there was one commercial or retail restaurant or retail tenant with the lobby and then other tenant spaces. Small-scale restaurant, more analogous to a specialty restaurant. The revised documents that the developer showed you, and which is referenced in this one bullet, call for what is developed right now, which is the lobby move more toward the northern edge of the property and one contiguous commercial space. That was not this, an approval for a restaurant. It was relocating where the lobby is to be more on the northern side, to provide a continuous space for the commercial. The developer also said that David Waltering, which was the city's former community development director, through this letter, was approving a modification from individual tenant spaces to one large sit-down restaurant. What is true is that David Waltering was still an employee here when Seaport came into the counter and said that they were looking at potentially leasing the space, and it was David Waltering that raised the first question about this and said, you know, we really need to have a meeting with the property owner and the developer, because this is not approved, this is not a part of the approvals. And so what I would submit to you is, the statement that you heard today does not really reflect the facts and what happened. What I think is also important to note is that the city raised the issue in 2018 when Seaport initially walked in, prior to the conclusion of the lease negotiations and that signing of the lease. And so the developer... And so the developer said that they would face a material financial damage from entering to a lease with Seapod. I think when the city raised the question and said, you know, what Seapod walked into the counter and asked about doing, which is one single sit-down restaurant, and the city raised a red flag, after that, you decided to enter into that lease. I don't think it's the city that caused a material financial damage, if there's a material financial damage. I think it's the city that raised the red flag and said, we don't think that this is consistent with the approvals. And what a developer decides to do, or a property owner decides to do once they're given that information, is totally up to them. And so I think the facts of this case, from my perspective and from staff's perspective, are clear. It was clear when the property was entitled and what the plan showed, what was being proposed, and the property owner and the developer would like to do something different. And there's potentially a process for them to submit information and potentially do that. They have chose not to avail themselves of that process.
With that, I'm going to bring it back to council, if there are questions at this time. So obviously, we can have discussion and our questions. And again, it's either our actions tonight would either be to grant it, deny it, or ask for postponement, if there was a need to review more documentation, as was indicated. Some of us received emails, as well as a 40-page document today. And so that's where we are at. So I'll open it up to the council.
Do the chair?
Michael.
I'll make a few comments. So the majority of us that are sitting up here were around when the initial decision was made, so we have a lot of history up here. And while we've heard talk about vested rights and what is legally entitled in this property, I think most of us remember what our feelings were, what our understandings were on what was being proposed and what we should expect. I wanted to commend staff, especially Director Smith, for taking the action that she took when she first came in and noticed that some things were not quite right. And I believe that your findings were consistent with the direction that this council has had, has given staff. And I believe that the actions that were taken by staff were appropriate. I've supported this project since the beginning. I think it is a very important project to downtown. I agree with everything that we've heard here today about, you know, what it's going to bring to downtown. I support the use of a restaurant. I think some of the very initial plans called for having a restaurant there, and then that was changed. And when we were told that, you know, parking was not going to be available, and we were given this option of doing something different, I was hesitant to go along with that plan. I heard the concerns from the residents in the area and decided maybe it was worth the risk, because this was an important project. And I, at the time, said that, you know, this would be basically a testbed for what is doable in that area, what we can actually get away with, and whether we were going to see the types of residents that, you know, were ready to abandon cars. Unfortunately, six years have gone by, and we still don't have any residents there, and we still don't have any data on what the real impact is going to be. And clearly, a restaurant in this location is going to have a much different impact from what was envisioned, from, you know, a small shop where people who live there could come down and maybe grab a muffin on their way to the train or something. This is going to be dramatically different. And I'm actually a little surprised that Seapod would be that willing to go into this venture, knowing full well that there would be no parking for their customers. And then it really goes beyond the risk that Seapod's willing to take on, because it not only impacts Seapod and its customers, but every other customer of every other business downtown. And we have to keep that in mind as well, because everybody else is already struggling to find parking for their customers. And now, this would be just, I mean, it would just make that problem that much worse. You know, I agree that it would be nice to see a community where, you know, everybody is green and abandoning their cars and riding bicycles. But the truth of the matter is that we're not a European city that was developed sometime before cars existed. San Bruno grew up around the automobile. It's based on the automobile economy. And it's going to be a long time before we get to the point where we can abandon it. It's a nice vision, and I support it. I think we should do things to move us in that direction, but we're not there yet. We are not there yet, and I don't see us being there for quite some time. We're still very much tied to our automobiles, and parking has to be a consideration. So I really hope that we can work something out, and Seapod does find a home here in San Bruno. I think this would, it'd be a great addition to our downtown, but I just can't support that happening without some parking being added to the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was here with Michael, and we did struggle a lot with the parking. We listened to a lot of the residents and their concerns. We also struggled with how to revitalize downtown, and that this project would be a cornerstone and would anchor one end of the transit corridor plan with BART and the train station being the other anchor. We were very excited to have the opportunity to kind of tinker with the architecture and the presentation of the building and how it would all come about. I don't recall ever, and there's no documentation that even hints at the fact that we would have considered a full 200-table sit-down restaurant. It just boggles the mind to think how many cars that would bring in. And yes, I agree with everyone. It would be fabulous if our people walked there or did their bicycles there. But we have restaurants, as somebody was saying, that, you know, the people are, oh, no, people will take transit, but they don't. You know, it's raining outside, you know you're not going to finish your meal until 10:00, 10:30 at night. You don't want to drive, you don't want to go on the bus at that kind of thing. You take your car. If you can't park right there, you park in the residence. We've all done it. We've all seen it. There's restaurants, Cecilia's Restaurant. It's horribly difficult to park there. It's just not what we envisioned for downtown. So while I would love to see Seapod someplace as well, I just don't think that's the right place.
Thank you. So the new development at 406, 418 San Mateo Avenue is really a significant development for San Mateo Avenue. And it's actually a really exciting time. I grew up spending a lot of time on that block, 400 block of San Mateo Avenue. Spent a lot of time battling the parking issues even back then. They've never, they have not changed. But as a business owner, a family who ran a business, I know how much parking affects a business. You will either succeed, or you will fail. If parking's unavailable, you move on somewhere else where it is available. I was not a council member back in 2014, when this came to council, but I do remember that existing commercial space, and I remember that it had a parking lot behind that space. I remember that it provided parking for the businesses on that site. When I look at these pictures of the new development, I'm excited about the new development. But I'm also very concerned about the lack of parking for the residential space, because that, in effect, does affect the surrounding residents as well as the existing businesses. I've been reached out to businesses, I've been reached out to residents about the inadequate parking. When it comes to Seapod, I am not against Seapod. In fact, I think it sounds fabulous. I would love to see a restaurant that type. I would love to see any type of great restaurant come into San Bruno that's going to revitalize San Bruno. Bring in something, bring in the people that want to come and spend money here. You have dinner, you have lunch, you end up going to get a haircut, you end up going to get your kids a swimming lessons. It's a win-win for all. What I struggle with is where, when I look at the documentation, and I can't understand where we went wrong in understanding the word specialty. Where is it that, and it's very clear when I look at the documentation, that specialty does not mean the donut shop, the deli, a small café with few seats. The plans indicate small tables. The plans don't indicate a 200-seat place. The plans don't indicate a banquet rooms. So there is a process. If you want to change the plans that were submitted, and you want to change what council here approved, and even going back, and I did watch the YouTube back in 2014, because I wasn't a member, you heard the questions, you heard the concerns, and it was clearly stated again and again that it would not be this big restaurant. We didn't provide the venting. We didn't provide a number of things for a large-scale restaurant. That was not in the plans. So I'm confused where specialty was confusing, that it's considered a restaurant. There are differences. So, you know, again, staff can hash this out, but I think it's very clear. I think that staff has done their job. I think Darcy's letter back in November 2018 clearly states it. And I'm definitely, I think it's very clear.
Well, for me, yes, I was on the council, too, in that process of elimination, if Laura was not. You know, and this was something that was undertaken, first of all, to the appellant. Have had a longtime relationship within this community, being engaged and seeing things come to fruition. And so I am troubled, as I sit here tonight, because I don't think neither of us want to be at this point, as you brought up, Drew, that you hope things can be worked out, sat down, and figured out. I know the owner, or one of the gentlemen from Seapod said, you know, with the parking aside, well, the parking is a concern. I have been to the El Camino and 20th Avenue. I've looked inside to Seapod. I also know that around the meal period, it gets, even there, with there's parking, it gets full. Sometimes people leave. I was one. And not for yours, for doing some other business. So parking does matter to those businesses, because to me, if you can't park, then, you know, we have that concern, and then it also just has the influx into the neighboring businesses. This is something that started down a path, and the person who had wanted to establish it long before, it fell through, and it came back. And so I think the council in 2014 was extremely excited to see something that had become in disrepair. Councilmember Davis is correct. When it was Taylor Street Bar and Grill up top, there was parking in the back, and there was some, like Jack's Drugs, and I know that goes way back in history, but there was parking in the back. But at the same time, as we have done this, you have 106 parking spots down for the 83 units up above, which are, as exceptions made. And now, we're coming back and being here on that council. I would agree that I had not, would not have envisioned a 220-seat restaurant with zero parking whatsoever to hit, whether it's that side of San Mateo Avenue or the other side of San Mateo Avenue. Irrelevant. But the restaurant that was mentioned, which is a fact, that because of its use, is offered a very, I'd say, a third, maybe, of the facility for tables and chairs for its restaurant, and doesn't use the two-thirds because of the fact that it isn't adequate parking then for the usage. So parking is a premium. Parking does matter. My hope is that somehow, the developer and staff go back for what was envisioned. And when you saw the picture of what was being cut, and that it works within the neighborhood, and it finds its parking, and to me, there are ways to find common ground, there are ways to move the ball forward, but it really takes about us thinking outside the box and trying to make that difference. Not only for the success of a business and those 83 units, but for the neighborhood and for the community as a whole. So I think it is that, I believe, reading the staff report, and I did have time to go over the 40 pages this afternoon, that I believe that the concurrence that Ms. Smith brought forward with her letter is accurate, from what I can see, going back to something in a meeting in 2015 that happened at City Hall, that didn't come before this body. Again, the folks aren't here, so I don't want to go down that path, but at the same time, modifications and changes come to this body. It is the elected body of this community, and to be heard here. It's also that a department head, no disrespect to department heads, doesn't have the authority to make modifications. They have small abilities to make simple things, and if you look at some of those, it could be where the bikes were going to be parked. It could be, they were minor things, but nothing that quantified this usage, in my opinion. And I know I'm not a lawyer. I'm just a lifelong resident of this community that cares. So with that said, is there any other comments or questions from council? And I do, and I forgot who said it, I think, city manager, it's, Seapod, it looks impressive. People have, I've gotten some calls even outside of San Bruno, believe it or not, in support of the restaurant and its quality, and what it brings to the table. No pun intended, but really, what it does. And so I think even if it was another style of restaurant, as the manager said, burgers and fry, it would be, in my mind, the same element would apply. It's not about the type of restaurant, it's about the restaurant in itself, whatever it might be, because I think it's a very impressive restaurant. And I've heard nothing but positive things when I visited over to that element and standing on a line somewhere else, and people talked about that restaurant. So anyway, I've said enough. Yes?
I just wanted to make one final comment that I forgot about also, and that is that, you know, there are other businesses on San Mateo Avenue that have been denied the ability to have a full-size restaurant, a full-size eating place. And I'm glad one of the residents brought it up, which was Atlas Pizza, because myself and Mayor Medina walked in and were kind of mouth-dropped when we looked at the space. Only a quarter of the restaurant is being utilized, and the other space is vacant, even though it used to be a Moose Lodge, and it used to have a number of people show up to that space. But because it was then remodeled for a restaurant, they had to get the required parking space. So how do you tell a restaurant who's been in business for a number of years, well, you can't have it, but say if someone else down in the 400 block can have the parking space, and we can bypass requirements? That's hard to look by, and that's one example of very many. And I know that staff deals with it on a daily basis. I do have a question, and another question for staff, and that is that the attorney, Mrs. Tamsen Plune, made a comment that she says that communication was, commercial was permitted, including sit-down restaurant, that the term specialty was never included in the approved documentation.
So, yes, I looked at the record, and that was omitted, but I want to emphasize the plans, if you look at that, which is a really fundamental piece of the record. It's what we base the quantification of the parking demand on, which was, which included the specialty restaurant or the retail. They just don't show a full-size sit-down restaurant taking the entire space. So, you know, again, we didn't add a condition of approval, because codes change over time, and sometimes there's just, there's just different regulations, so we didn't want to prohibit it. But no, it was not mentioned in the staff report. But again, the parking was quantified, and the plans were attached, which I provide you in the staff report, and they don't show what's proposed. So we take that, all, we take all of that information when we make that, when I made that determination.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, question, or action from council? Again, on this item, it is either to grant the appeal, to deny the appeal, or to postpone for further review and deliberation.
I'll make a motion to deny the appeal.
Been a motion made to deny. Is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second.
There's been a motion made and second, it just, it doesn't need, we'll call just a motion. So we have a motion and a second to go ahead and deny the appeal of the appellant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? I have a 4-0 with one recusal and to deny the appeal. Yes, it is.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, just for the record, this is not the final action of the city council. The staff will be bringing back to the city council at a subsequent meeting a resolution memorializing the action with detailed findings.
Okay. Thank you. I do thank you for, I know it's gotten late in the hours, so thank you for your patience, and thank you for being here and caring. and thank you for being here and caring. Mr. Medina, if you would return to the dice, please. All right, let's go ahead and continue on. We're on item number seven, which is comments from council members. Mr. Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not big on the council comments, but I did have something I wanted to share. So, this-
Hold on, hold on just for a sec. Let's just-
We'll clear the room.
Yes, please. Thank you.
So, something I wanted to share, this past weekend, I completed the CERT program here in San Bruno. And for those who don't know, CERT stands for the Community Emergency Response Team, and it's a six-week program that's put on by the San Bruno Fire Department, and it trains residents in how to react to emergency situations in the city. It goes through a lot of different, different scenarios, well, different modules that are, come from something that was compiled by FEMA, and so, it does address a lot of different issues and concludes on a Saturday with some practical, hands-on exercises. And it was a really interesting and worthwhile program, I believe. And so, I wanted to commend Chief Cresta and his staff on putting together a really excellent program. I thought it was extremely valuable and a lot of fun, so please pass along my thanks and appreciation to the staff, chief. And this is a program that does happen periodically, so there will be more opportunities for anyone who's interested to participate in this. So, if you keep an eye out, it gets posted on social media and the word gets out there. And Rico was there at the, at the last day when they were handing out the certificates, and he actually shared, he was very eloquent in sharing some thoughts on what our experience has been here in San Bruno in response to the Glenview explosion and how we saw firsthand the value of volunteers in emergency situations. And in that case, we did have a lot of professional assistants that responded to our tragedy, but there were still a lot of volunteers that showed up. And having a trained volunteer cadre in the city is very, very important. And one thing that's stressed throughout the training and something Rico brought up as well is that in a larger emergency, we may be on our own for a while, and having residents able to take care of themselves and their neighbors and help support the professional emergency personnel is going to be critical. So, I highly recommend it. Keep an eye out for the next class, and thanks again to chief for the program.
I have a couple of comments. Number one, it's interesting that a comment was made earlier tonight about the pathway leading from El Camino to here. And I know that we haven't brought this up at our subcommittee meetings, but it's been a comment that's been made to, by my sister, and I try to keep family comments, nice comment, but I don't really bring them up. But as I think about it more often, I've attended funeral receptions here, we've come up from St. Roberts, et cetera, there's never enough parking in this lot, et cetera, that it would be nice if we can somehow incorporate some sort of better pathway leading from El Camino to here, since it is a public facility and we are looking to get more transit-oriented and get people to show up and attend. A comment was made by a councilmember Medina about, you know, if you have issues, come here to a meeting, attend, voice your opinions, voice your concerns. So, I don't know what that cost or what it's about, but if there's something that can be looked at or thought about, because it is difficult to leave here tonight through the trees, through the dark. It's not necessarily a really safe thing that I would prefer to do, something that's a little bit more well-lit. And so, since we're in the process of redesigning a building and probably going to be touching that support of the gym rectory, maybe sidewalk is something that would benefit. So, that's my comment.
Thank you. I just want to remind people, I hope you can get a shot of this, that you received your community service activity guide. It's extremely informational, and it has about Operation Clean Suite, it has about a grant that the city has received for people having, applying for free street trees that they don't have to plant, somebody else will plant it for them. It has about Community Day at the Park, which is June 2nd. It's our 79th Posy Parade, which we'll be talking about more, I'm sure, later on. But if you see this in the mail, don't throw it away, save it for, until the next one comes.
It's great when we get a comment from the public where it's really an important safety situation, and I'm driving all the way up all the time, you know, driving at night and driving up to these meetings, and it never occurred to me to think that people would try to walk along there, but so definitely wanted to support Councilmember Davis in having us look forward into some pathway and some signage that direct people to the safe way of the, through the park. So, thank you.
Do the chair.
Well, Michael, go ahead.
I was going to follow up on that because I think that is, that is important, getting people here safely is important. But then I was also looking at a proposed new community hall in the, in the new rec center, wondering if maybe we could build in a, council chambers there.
I was just told, since everybody else spoke, I should say something. But I will tell you, there was a, I forget what Friday it was, I was, I happened to be at City Hall, was talking to deputy city clerk, and this gentleman, Wesley, came in. Very nice gentleman who drove all the way from San Francisco to come in, and he knew somebody who managed an apartment building and had a tenant who had passed, the family came in to take out what they chose. And they left back a couple of yearbooks, 1962, 1963 Cappuccino. And it was his desire, he held them, but he didn't want to just see them discarded. So, he brought them down and said, I happened to be standing there and I didn't jump up right away, said, can I see the mayor? And so, Vicki paused, didn't turn and said, he's right there, but I have something for him, but it's all good, don't worry. So, he brought it up, and I said, you know what, come on in. So, he came in and he gave me the history of the family, the two brothers that did attend there, the lady who had passed, and she was in drama, and just the history and going through. And oddly enough, I went through some of the faculty, and there were a couple of the teachers that I had when I went to Cappuccino. But for him to come all the way down, I thought it was interesting and very nice to drive it all the way from San Francisco just to bring that history so that we can look back as we look forward. And I think the comedy, since it's been a long night, was that he asked, you know, we're in San Bruno, are we not? I said, yeah, we are. And he says, okay, has there been another mayor? And he just kept, he was struggling, so he kind of looked at it and he says, you know, I looked up San Bruno mayor and I went to San Bruno Patch, so I was looking for Robert Reichel. And so, when I saw you, I thought, okay, something's wrong. So, anyway, he expected to see Robert, but he saw Rico. But needless to say, it was very kind of him and it was very interesting. I have those, I'm going to read some of the stuff. It's really intriguing to go back those years and kind of see Cappuccino back then. So, anyway, with that said, we will go ahead and adjourn to our next regular scheduled meeting of April the 23rd at 7 o'clock right here at the senior center. Meeting adjourned.